Council, if you will come to order, it is 6:00 PM and we are in a special session. All council members are present, we do have a quorum. It is time for citizens' presentations. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council. On any matter whether or not it is posted on the agenda that council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics or your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Hotty, do we have anyone wishing to speak at this time?
No, Mayor.
We will then move on to item number one. Consider to take appropriate action regarding the appointment of the town attorney position, discussion of same. Chair will recognize Mayor Protim Lamont for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to appoint David Dodd as the town attorney for the Town of Trophy Club.
Do you have a second? It is moved by Mayor Protim Lamont, selected by Schaffner. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those approving, show your hand. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. David, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Item number two. Consider to take appropriate action regarding town-owned property and irrigation services located within the Highlands, discussion of same. I'm gonna read a statement to give us some direction tonight and then I'm gonna ask Frank Cohen to introduce himself and those board members with him, just so everybody is on the same field knowing who everybody's part of the, in the audience tonight. In order to help the citizens who may watch this meeting or listen to it as a recording to better understand what we're here for tonight, I thought it would be good just to give some brief history. First, many months ago, maybe over a year ago, the council directed the staff to review all areas maintained by the town to see if in fact it was our responsibility. In that process, it was discovered that the town was providing water to parts of the new development of the pit. For the past few months, the previous HOA management committee, if that's in fact their name, along with the HOA Management Company of Essex Community Management, and then later the HOA Board, as it was formed when the developer turned the responsibility over to its residents, had been working to move towards the direction that council has been seeking. Tonight, it's important to keep focused on an equitable, fair, and long-term solution for the town and the HOA. Reviewing how we got to this point is not as important as working towards the solution. So I would hope that we can keep our remarks with this in mind. At the end of our deliberation, the council needs to provide specific direction to staff realizing the HOA Board will most likely have to agree to some of our direction. The two major points are, one, the HOA is maintaining land that the town owns and was provided in part, if not all, in a parkland dedication. This land cannot be sold or given to any other organization without a vote of the citizens of Trophy Club. And two, the town is maintaining land owned by the HOA. In some cases, this land was indicated by plat as to who was to maintain it, and in other cases, it was designated by developer's agreement between the developer and the town. Just as recently as in the last week or so, council was made aware of the fact that some of the matters that made this even more complicated were in fact aspects that are gonna be referred to as slip roads. And I think everybody understands that definition. It's like a median offset to the right or the left, and has a little road that goes in front of houses. And in some cases, it looks like that was designated as HOA, and in some cases, the town right-of-way along Trophy Club Drive in fact takes part of that land. So, nothing seems to be really clean and simple in this case. Frank, if you want to introduce yourself and your fellow board members and the Essex representative, I'll let you do that at this time and then we'll, I think we're gonna have a presentation by staff, alright?
So, first of all, thanks for having us this evening. My name's Frank Cohen, I'm the president of the Highlands at Trophy Club Homeowners Association. Tonight, I've asked Malcolm Loudon, the owner of Essex Management Company, to come with us. I have Irv Semenite, he's our vice president, and I have Joel Morris, who is our member-at-large. With that being said, I guess the other thing that I would say is, I'd like to apologize to you guys for missing the meeting on the 23rd. It was my oversight completely. The Tuesday to Monday shift completely got me. I, I have nothing else to tell ya, just that's what got me is shifting from Tuesday to Monday and I wouldn't even consider it. So I apologize, 'cause I know you guys had this teed up at that time, but all things happen for a reason and seems like this has happened to be able to give us all a little more time to dig into it a little deeper.
Alright, thank you. And I appreciate everyone coming tonight. So, who's gonna make the presentation? Steven? If I can just say Steven in it.
One of us will pop up.
Give it, you know, gives us an option there. Is there some reason one monitor doesn't show? I don't know that it matters, but...
Doesn't look like it's on.
Maybe it's not turned on, I don't know. Alright, go ahead and we'll just watch. So, gentleman to your left, I guess, the monitor will show.
A fairly short presentation on this. As we know, this has been a, something we've been working on quite a while. We gave a presentation over most of it. I think council has seen most everything at this point. What we're gonna discuss is, you know, basically, I'll give you a recap. February 2015, council directed town staff to audit our properties. Summer of 2015, staff met with Essex Management Company two times regarding the disconnection from the town's irrigation system. November 2015, staff again met with Essex Management Company and two representatives from the Highlands HOA. At that meeting, we presented a plan to minimize the cost of the potential transition. Again, March of 2016, we met with two other representatives of the Highlands HOA and a representative from their irrigation company, and at that meeting, we presented the same plan to minimize the cost of the transition. And then May 2015, council directed staff to disconnect the Highlands HOA from the town's irrigation system.
That'd be sixteen, wouldn't it?
That'd be sixteen, wouldn't it? May 16?
Yes, correct, May 16, my mistake. And then, again, requested that it be brought back to discuss at tonight's meeting. So, from that point, from the May council meeting, we've updated some information. We evaluated all the developer agreements and zoning ordinances associated with the Highlands and have made the following determinations. The developer is responsible for maintenance of all public and semi-public places, including roadway medians and parkways for a period of 12 months from the completion of such improvements. The developer is responsible to create an HOA, and that HOA is responsible for the maintenance of all common space, as it's called out according to plats or developer agreements. The HOA is maintaining in various forms, meaning irrigation, mowing, edging, those types of things. Thirteen pieces of property owned by the town, which are part of the 100 acres that was dedicated to the town as parkland. And then the HOA is not responsible for the perpetual maintenance of these properties as they're part of the parkland dedication and not platted or governed by the developer agreements. And then, as the mayor alluded to, the slip roads that are being maintained currently by the town are a combination of common space or right-of-way according to the plats or developer agreements. This is something that is ambiguous at best, I would say. No clear definition on really responsibility on some of these.
I have a question about that, it's specific. In Denton Cat, it looks like we own those.
There are some that we do, and some are, High Trophy Development is listed as the owner.
Right, but the ones that aren't separately platted, they're all just a part of the thing. In either case, if it's past 12 months from the initial improvement, I don't understand why it's material.
Well, on these, these are actually called out as common space, and there are, and this is something that we need to research more because every other developer agreement for the Highlands says that the developer should create an HOA and the HOA is responsible for maintaining all common space. So if it is common space, then the HOA should maintain it after the 12 months.
So these are called out in what?
In the plats.
'Cause the plats seem very specific on properties that they are to maintain, not, it doesn't, the plats and the developers' agreements that I've read are very specific and to the point, to the block and to the lot. So I didn't get the same...
Well, almost every developer agreement that is in the Highlands says the developer should create the HOA and the HOA is responsible for all common space. So, if it's noted as common space on the plat, then it would be the developer to maintain it for the 12 months and then the HOA that they're supposedly to create. But, on this particular one, we've ran into some issues finding this particular one for, what was it, Phase Two? Is that correct?
Yes.
Of the Highlands? So, we're working on tracking that one down. If that one says the exact same thing as the other ones, we would assume that this would be the HOA's responsibility to maintain.
What about the slip roads in front of Turnberry? Who takes care of those?
We maintain all of those.
So you do.
The Trophy Club Drive one, correct?
That's what, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
All the ones on Trophy Club Drive are maintained by the town.
Okay.
Alright, go on.
So, one thing we met with a few council members last week about was a potential solution, and kind of what we came up with was the HOA would continue to maintain the areas that they're currently maintaining in the Highlands that are on the town's parkland. The town continued to maintain the slip roads we're currently maintaining and the five grass strips that staff recommended continued maintenance at the previous council meeting. And then the HOA moved forward with providing irrigation to the other areas, which are basically the entry features to the Highlands, which were discussed at the previous council meeting, and then extending the deadline to switch over service to September 30th, with the caveat that the HOA would pay the town a reasonable rate for the cost of fresh water and/or production of well water. And then drafting and adopting an agreement that states all of these items.
I have a thought.
Do you have another slide or is that it?
Just, just after that, questions?
Okay.
Questions?
Ryland?
Where I really hope we can find a way to end up is that a legal owner of property maintains the property they legally own, in the absence of an ongoing written existing agreement that says otherwise. And I would hope that whatever solution we come up with today does not, if it does produce a new agreement, that that agreement doesn't live for very long. 'Cause let's not maintain agreements in perpetuity if we can find a way to sunset them or phase them out. So, just so y'all know how I'm approaching this.
Alright, Greg?
Phase one and phase two, are you saying that Phase One has in it that the developer does it for 12 months, then it turns the maintenance over to an HOA? But you cannot find that language in Phase Two?
That was Phase Two, we cannot find that. All of the other developer, subdivision's agreements state that, I believe if you look at, I think it's section Q in all of those, it says, developer has to create an HOA, the HOA is responsible for maintaining all common areas.
And what areas are Phase One, just for the record?
What areas are Phase One? Basically, the slip roads.
Slip roads.
But, but there's one HOA for the entire area?
That's correct.
So, I mean, it should govern both one and two, since there is an HOA, or there'd be no HOA for the second phase?
Well, it's a different, it's an agreement for a different set of plats and land, so...
But it's not saying that, but it's not saying that it sets up an HOA? Is what you're saying?
Correct. We have not been able to locate.
But I mean, so if we were going by the letter of the contract, half of the Highlands would not be in an HOA?
Well, it doesn't say that they can't set up an HOA, it just, the other phases require them to do so.
Right. Okay.
And so, what you're saying is, you do have the developer's agreement, you just can't find in it where it specifies that? Or are you saying you don't have the developer's agreement?
We have not been able to find that developer's agreement.
Okay. So it may be in there, it may not be, but you can't find the developer's?
Correct.
Better and better. Real quick, when you say Phase One and Phase Two, what is the context of that? 'Cause all I've ever heard the development described in is neighborhoods one through nine, so what is the context, what do those phases describe?
Ron?
Those are the phases of, Trophy Club Drive is platted separately from the rest of the Highlands, so there's a Phase One plat and a Phase Two plat.
Documents that are associated with that plat? Of just, of just the road?
Yeah, what it was is, there were, it was Phase One, Master Improvements Phase One, which was the first piece by Turnberry, and then there was Master Improvements Phase Two, which was the second piece as you go back towards Trophy Park Drive and all that.
Because I noticed that in the plat that contains the road, it doesn't point, it doesn't label the slip road medians, the ones that Steven sent today. In some of the neighborhood plats, the slip road medians are labeled sometimes as common area with no individual number, sometimes as common area with an individual number. So, if, it seems to me that if the common areas, if the slip roads aren't labeled, if the slip road medians aren't labeled in the Phase One, if the plat that accompanies Phase One in the developer's agreement, how could it apply to them if they're not even labeled in that document?
Alright, so Phillip had his hand up first.
No, I was just gonna agree with Ryland on, I think if you go way back to the beginning of this, we discovered when we tried to put the parks RFQ out, that you could throw a dart and hit somewhere in Trophy Club that we maintain that we don't own, you know? And so, you can go right up the street to the cemetery. We have a strip of land that we maintain that nobody can find a document to, nobody knows why we maintain it. Well, we know why we maintain it, because we wanted their field dirt, and it's the most expensive field dirt in history because we continually maintain that little strip of land forever. And so, I think that what we wanted to get to was, okay, we wanna take, go to the Cemetery Association and say, we wanna buy this strip of land so that when we maintain it, we own it. And I think that we've been very consistent throughout all this, and this was way before we knew anything about the irrigation system. This is, this predates that, that we found out that we were maintaining land that was the HOAs, that wasn't ours. And so, I think that we have made a conscious effort as a council to try to get this straight before all of us are term limited and gone. We'd like to get this straight because it took a citizen to come up here and explain how we got to the cemetery situation. And so, 20 years from now, somebody's gonna have to explain that on a Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, we met and we hammered out some agreement that said we would maintain property that we don't own and they would maintain property that they don't own. I don't think that we wanna do, you know, 20, 30 years from now, have to be in that position. And so I think that what we want long-term, our goal is to get to the point that if we maintain, if we own the property, we maintain it. If we don't own it, somebody else maintains it. And kind of to your point, Nick, so we know for a fact that parkland dedication cannot be sold?
Without a vote of the citizens. That's correct.
Okay, so we know that for a fact. So, I think that at the end of the day, if it's our land, we oughta be maintaining it, you know? That's just, I think that that's where we need to get to. I don't, you know, I'm not sure who all met last week, I think it was you and Tim and Greg, but I just think that at the end of the day, my goal, before I leave council, is to, the town to be maintaining property it owns and only what it owns.
Alright, Tim had his hand up and then I'm gonna talk and then, so, Tim?
I guess, for me, it makes sense that we take care of the slip roads. So, would that mean that we have to buy the, they have to dedicate those slip roads to us for us to take care of them? We have to buy them?
Here's the thing, some of those, if you look at the appraisal district, there is not an owner.
That always means us. We found, that's what we learned in this discussion. Nobody means us.
There's really only, there's really only four that are not either no owner or owned by us already, so we're already maintaining them all. We're maintaining the irrigation, doing the full mowing and everything.
Right, I guess, I'd like to take that off the table and move this forward, I guess, is to say, okay, I think we're pretty close to agreeing that we should be taking care of those and go forward. Howard, I think so, I mean, you would ask for the vote.
We'll, let's try to decide that here in just a second. So, there are slip roads that would say they're common area because the plat says that.
Correct.
And because the developer's agreement have said that's an HOA issue, if the plat said it and those are not HOA property at DCAD, then is that a problem with us saying we file with DCAD, all of those become ours and then we maintain them? No?
I don't think there's an issue with that. Four of them are owned by the developer. I'm sure they would have no issue giving us those, since we're already maintaining them.
So, even in that case, if they're owned by the developer, it might entail plating or some aspect of documenting it more?
We might be able to do it. Ron, would we be able to do that under separate instrument?
That's, that is an option, yes.
Easier way of plating or replating to at least identify the names of who owns what?
Much cheaper way, as well.
Much cheaper way.
And I think that's where we wanna get to, like what you're saying, is...
Alright, so, we are agenda to take appropriate action, but let's get through the entire thing, I think. If anybody has an objection to that approach, go ahead and state that, let's have a debate about that issue, so that we at least kinda know where we're headed. Yes, Garrett?
I don't have an objection to the approach, in fact, I'd support it, and it's simply, I'm all about this being black and white. That's, I mean, I'm just re-reading the same thing. We own it, we maintain it. Somebody else owns it, they maintain it. I'm all for that. Let's just figure out now who owns it, and then it's that simple.
So I think the direction, once we get to that point, would be to move in that direction on the medians, the slip roads, that is, to get ownership of those.
Alright. And so, the board's hearing this conversation. If you wanna make a statement about that particular topic, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to do so, you can always come back to it, but if you wanna express something at this point about the slip road issue, anybody? Or Malcolm? Come to the microphone, state your name and address, please, Malcolm.
Malcolm Loudon, 200 Bailey Avenue, Fort Worth, Texas, 76107. Just to the point where it's owned by 831 Trophy, the developing entity, all of those common area parcels are being cleaned up and deeded over from the developer to the HOA currently, so it will be owned by the HOA shortly.
These, these four in question are owned by High Trophy? Does it apply to ones owned by High Trophy as well?
Yeah, it's High Trophy, 831 Trophy, I think there's several different entities that they're going through their tax records right now and we're preparing deeds for each one of those entities to get to the HOA.
So are these, Steven, are these ones that we're concerned about actually along Trophy Club Drive?
Correct, they're all, they're all along Trophy Club Drive.
And so, one of the things we'd wanna do is to make sure we work with Mur Dodd's company about that issue. There's no use turning them over to the HOA and then us trying to turn them back over to us, if we can solve that problem.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we have not drafted the deeds at this point, we're just getting the spreadsheets together, so it's not...
Okay. And, Tim?
Can you ask them if they want the property?
You can ask them, yeah.
I mean, do you wanna keep the property and maintain it, or do you wanna deed it over? That's the slip road you're talking about?
I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason why they would want to continue ownership of that.
Okay, and none of these properties are called out specifically, correct? These are just common areas? None of them are called out specific in the plats or the developer's agreement? I couldn't find any slip roads that were like that.
The slip roads are labeled slip roads in the plats. They're not assigned a lot and block number, but they're also not dedicated as right-of-way either. They just weren't properly labeled when the plats came through.
Yeah, it actually says common, I think it says common space, common area, and then slip road number or whatever, that's what I saw.
So what the process, the process would be is that Essex and Malcolm would prepare the legal descriptions of those properties, and then they would bring those to us and we would accept the dedication of those, which then we would file with Denton County to change it, the ownership of the town. It would be, it's not a complicated process and that's the simplest, cheapest way to do it.
Okay, so that makes sense as they dedicate that to us, right? The developer does.
The council would have to accept that dedication.
Right. And then they become ours and we're already maintaining them, kinda solves that issue, I think? Does it not? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright, and so, Irv, I mean, Frank, you seem to have a packet of information with you. Did you wanna hand out something to us tonight?
I mean, this is, these are my notes, the thing that I brought for you guys.
Come on to the microphone so we can get that recorded.
These are just, since May 23rd, the data collection that I've been on, these are mine. What I've brought is probably something you guys have already seen, it's the research that, do you want me to hand them out?
Yes, please pass them out. You can just start and we'll pass them down if you want to.
What that is, is it's a, it's a combination of information. It's information that has been shared from, like, from the town to the HOA, and then it's research that we did on our own with Denton CAD, through Denton CAD. So the first page you're looking at there is, it's the town map that has the different plots of the town, and then we overlay that with the aerial. It's the water meter account number, what the Denton CAD account number is and kind of what the address is called out, and then it calls out also who the current owner is. And then on the next page, I apologize, I wanted to be able to get it on one page for you guys, but it couldn't. It calls out like what we currently do, what the homeowners association of the Highlands at Trophy Club, how the current maintenance irrigation piece, and then just some notes on the side. So, if you look at aerial one, town aerial one, we drew out what the homeowners association landscaping crew, what they mow, and then the little red dot there, little red circle, is where the water meters at. So, and that's, and that's referenced in all these pieces, and so it was just kinda to bring everything together, and that's what I was gonna share with you guys, and listening, if I may indulge a bit, you know, listen to the conversation, you know, I could give you my history of, I've been here less than 18 months and, you know, had a friend that asked me to get involved with this and no problem, and Phillip, I'm like yourself, I don't, I want things to be finished on my watch. And so, I want this to be finished on my watch. Last week at the special assessment meeting, I told the residents, come the next watch it's yours. I would like to suggest that we all want this done, we all want this done appropriately. If we could, and I saw Mr. Glickman's recommendations, but if we could potentially leave things a status quo until September 30th, and then I would ask you guys to commission a committee, and the committee potentially be myself and Essex, two appointed town staff members and two appointed town council members, and we meet on a regular basis to get this, to create a well-defined solution. Because there's information that hasn't been, you know, finished yet, there's history that goes on and on and on with email trails and email chains, and there's so much information and data that's still to be talked about and presented that with, in my professional life, sometimes if you get a smaller group of folks that are focused on a solution, you get to that solution, it's a clearly defined solution, and then that solution can be debated in an educated manner.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Couple of pieces of information, I don't remember how long ago, but in the last two years, I think, there has been an election where we turned parkland over to something. It's not hard to do, the issue is, does a citizen understand what they're voting on? And so, it can be accomplished if you choose to do that, the risk you take is the citizens say, I'm not giving up my parkland, kinda thing, but when they look at it, some of it might make sense. But when they look at it, some of it might make sense. Secondly, the three council members that did meet with staff extended the date to the end of the fiscal year because we understood this was no simple solution, and it really makes sense to provide everybody time. And we picked the end of the fiscal year as a way to do that. So, that's the reason we put the stake in the ground at that point. And it seemed like it made sense that the HOA was faced with a large capital expenditure. They're obviously, if they want to do assessments, are trying to get enough people to even vote in that situation. It makes sense to give everybody time, and so at least the three of us felt like, well, if we can come up what a cost is, and the HOA would actually agree, I'll reimburse the town for that. The three of us felt like, well, that's the easy solution is, let's deal with the money separately, because it is going to take some time to solve some things. So, that was the reason we came to that date. Let me point out something, if you would, from my personal viewpoint. If you go to aerial one, which is the third page of Frank's handout, and you look at the part that is being maintained by the HOA, which is circled in red somewhat, I guess, right? I can see why the developer would have said, I want to maintain this because I want this area to look nice when we're selling homes. And so, I can see that. Now, from my standpoint, if we take that over, I'm not sure that I want to water it and mow it at the frequency that those people want it watered and mowed. It becomes like a median in that sense, done, mowed weekly in the peak season and I'm having to spend water on it. And so, I have a little bit of an issue and would almost rather, in some cases where it made sense, to pursue, given that to the HOA, because now, all the HOA probably could care less about it because there are only really two or three homes that care about that little area. But if you look at all these pictures, you'll find there are two or three people on every one of these cul-de-sacs that probably would prefer that they look nice. So, that's just where I am at this moment. So, Phillip, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just taking like you're doing, aerial one. In the plat, it calls out each cul-de-sac and it says that the HOA will maintain the right of way. So, where we have a problem is, I don't think that we've ever been given a map to say, okay, this is exactly what that area is. You know, this is actually the first good map that I've seen that shows exactly where the water meter is. And so, that's great for us, you know. But on our side, we've never seen anything to specifically say, okay, this is the area that the plat is saying that they are required to maintain, and then we're required to maintain the additional.
And I think that gets complicated a little bit by the fact that the trail system goes along there and...
I know, the plat's very specific.
I know, but I'm just saying, if you look at that area, part of the trail is in that area.
I know, but we should know what our right of way is in that area.
Yes, Stephen?
The 100 acres that was the park dedication, all of that area is unplatted. So, the 13 pieces of property are all part of that, they're all within that 100 acres. So, if there's an area, are you saying that there's an area that extends beyond?
No, I'm saying that the plat has these four cul-de-sacs labeled, very specific. And it says along those cul-de-sacs that the HOA will maintain the right of way. And it will maintain the right of way of the big open lot on Rose Bay, that big open lot that's there by itself. The HOA will maintain that right of way. So, I'm sure we're going to get to that at some point and show that open lot. So, what we don't have is specific maps that show us exactly what is our responsibility and what is the HOA's responsibility. So, I know that they're maintaining this, but I don't know which part is ours and which part is theirs. So, we need to know that before we can make...
Like a second line.
Yeah, we need to know that before we can make a decision on, you know, because a majority of that may be in the right of way, a majority of that may not be. We don't know.
And I can understand the fact that it's a circular cul-de-sac, that if the right of way's X feet outside the curb, that it's going to go all the way around that, but...
But we don't know.
But we don't know that, and I don't think we're going to know that tonight, quite frankly. So, that's the reason I really want specific direction. What's our next step? Where do we head from here?
And I'll say one other thing, and this is putting my town council, representing the whole town, which some people don't think that we do, but we do. It's not fair to the Highlands HOA to be maintaining property and them paying for it and not the whole town on property that we own. So, it's really not fair to those residents in the Highland to be paying specifically for all of this stuff and us not, now, we can come, we can potentially, if we can't figure this out where they maintain it, we can potentially come to some kind of agreement where we pay, we still maintain it, but we're paying somebody to do it for us, much like we would do outsourcing something. But I think that we have to consider that as well.
Greg?
Well, the flip of that is that we're maintaining, the taxpayers are maintaining the slip roads which they own. They're the reverse of that.
Wow, we have a really, it's ambiguous, yeah.
Okay, but I get that. What we did throw out at our meeting was the swap of land, slip roads for the other 13 acres as far as maintenance. We keep the, maintaining the five strips, I believe, and then extending the time where they would pay for the water and the electric and whatever. Is that still on the table, or that's just not a good idea? Because we don't know the boundaries of the right of way, or can that be the end solution, rather than have a committee of three different entities? And you know how that works, not well. Mine might have thought on that.
Alright, Ryland?
I do agree with you on, I think a subcommittee would probably actually be prolong the decision rather than make it happen quicker. But what I want to see happen is something that doesn't require the long-term maintenance of a contractual agreement for something that should be cut and dry. I've got an idea for how to make a motion to make it happen when we get there. But at the end of the day, if the town should be owning, should be maintaining property that it owns, subject to existing developers' agreements that state otherwise, and that's that.
Garrett?
I just have a quick comment or thought about, somebody said something about the cost and the fact that the residents would have to vote to increase their dues to pay for that. I understand why that is. I actually manage an HOA in Southlake, not by choice, but by, I developed it and I wound up being stuck with it. And so, there's very specific things you do when you manage an HOA. You can't increase the dues without the vote of the people, blah, blah, blah. One thing you do is you build reserves, and you need to have reserves in there for capital expenditures. What frustrates me a little bit, and I don't know if this is where we're going with this. This particular group, I mean, everybody knows about the casino night parties, they're spending all the money, they're running it down, they're not creating reserves. So, when they come to us and they ask if they're going to ask us for money to help supplement what we're going to do, I just, those things stick in my mind, that money's been run down, that they haven't taken care of, putting up reserves. I'm not saying it's this particular group of guys, I know some of y'all just moved there. But this has been under management for a long time. There should have been reserves built up, there should have been planning for this stuff to be in place. And I have no sympathy if it wasn't. So, I'm just letting you guys know where I'm at on that. I believe it should be a clear black and white line, but when it comes to that kind of stuff, guys had a lot of money for a long time and I've heard about some awesome casino nights and money's been blown on, so. Anyway, just my thought.
So, I think from my standpoint, what I'm trying to figure out is, area one shows some space to me that would be maintained fairly nicely, I would suspect, so that the neighbors like that area. If I look at area two, same thing, I see a lot of green space. I'm not sure how well it's, the people use it for open field to play on or whatever. So, the question I get to when I look at these is, does it make sense that you as a council, not makes sense, I shouldn't say that. Does council want to decide that you're going to ma, if this is your land and you're using the rule of thumb that says if it's my land, I maintain it, and if it's your land, you maintain it? If this is our land, are you willing to maintain it at the same level? Mowed weekly in the peak season, watered sufficiently to keep it green? Because I suspect that's what's done now. And so, to me, if you're not willing to do that, I think the HOA needs to understand that because they might, would prefer that it looks better. So, Greg had his hand up and then Tim.
Well, taking the reverse of that, what if they don't maintain the slip roads properly? We maintain the median?
I'm not talking about slip roads.
No, but you're saying they might want that maintained at a higher level. Well, we want the slip roads maintained at a higher level too, every week. But if they decide to do it every two weeks, or what if they do it on a Tuesday, we do it on a Thursday, a weekend misses and we start getting phone calls? How come you're not maintaining the town in the same proper fashion? Or why aren't you doing the slip roads? The slip roads will fall more onto us in a negative way than the small parcels. That's why I still believe in the swap of the...
We've already, we've come to a consensus that we would like to take the slip road median.
That's what I felt, although we didn't vote, I think you're right.
I have a motion written out for it if we ever need it.
Then we take the slip roads, we take those off the table, but I wanted to get all the facts out there before we do it. Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I did want to say, I'm going to use aerial number two. So, in my opinion, if this were our land, which it is, if we were doing it, we would probably mow just a few feet from the trails, because that's what it's like. Like, we would not keep this all short and tight and green. It would not look like it is now. It would be from those trails, we would probably go three feet out, right? Is that what you usually do?
We mow 10 feet outside the property.
Okay, so 10 feet from the trails. So, all that other stuff inside there would not get mowed by us. I mean, we would just leave it, you know, and, I mean, so that's our standard operating procedure. That's how we would take care of it. We're not going to go above and beyond. Not that we should.
It would be mowed less, but I mean, the direction it seems to be moving is maintenance of more. The Highlands people more and more are wanting their stuff mowed.
Yeah, I'm not saying what they want. I'm saying what we do in the rest of the town. This is our land. We're going to do it to our standing operating procedure. And if that's 10 feet from there and we're not going to do it as much, they should know that that's the way we're going to do it. We're not, just like we're talking about, we're going to do it per our specifications. We're not going to have the Highlands come in and say, we want it done this way. Turnberry to come in and say, we want it done this way. Hogan's glance saying, we want it done this way. We have standing operating procedures.
Alright. So, in looking at this map, that little aerial one up to the top right, the sidewalk that goes way down. So, we're saying that we maintain that, that they don't maintain that?
I don't have the document.
You don't have a document?
Do we have another document?
Not what y'all have, no. I don't have what y'all have.
We have another copy of it? There you go, you got one.
Alright.
So...
If it's green and has a meter, they're maintaining it.
It's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
They maintain on aerial two, all that area, on aerial one, that area. But there, right where that little, on aerial one at the top right, there's the, I guess depending on how you're looking at it, but that little sidewalk that goes down, you see that?
On the top right or the top left?
Well, top left, it depends on how you're looking at it.
Talk about up here. Look at it so that the English letters are legible and tell me what right or left.
Well, that'd be the top right then.
Top right.
Alright, top right, English is legible. The sidewalk, so we maintain that, is that what we're saying?
That's town land. No, they maintain that.
Where do you see that they maintain?
No, not if it's not in red.
Well, that's just what they're saying. Inside the red is what they're maintaining.
Where is it inside red?
No, they're saying inside the red is town land.
Oh.
It's all town land.
So, are you saying you maintain that, Malcolm? Go to the microphone.
No, no, the whole area, no, the next...
Go to the next page.
Slide one, please.
The HOA mows?
No, 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 I'm on aerial one, aerial one.
Yeah, I don't know if they maintain the other side of the trail.
Okay, mine printed out sideways, okay.
So, yes. They definitely do the inside.
We just mow the area, inside the red area.
Okay, so that...
So, up here is maintained by the town.
So, that is maintained by the town.
Outside the red area.
Right, right.
Yeah, you can kind of see like, I guess that's about 10 feet, you can kind of see a little differentiation in the color there of the grass.
But go back towards the cul-de-sac. There's 20 feet of what looks like you maintain.
That's correct.
Along the trail.
Correct, along that homeowner's front yard.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, do you know, do we maintain that?
No, they maintain, they maintain this. I can't remember that they maintain the other side of the trail, on the other side of the trail. Usually that's always us, but from the trail into the homes, they are maintaining that.
Okay, so the question is, on the other side of the sidewalk...
Town's doing that.
It may be both on it, right, yeah.
So, so my question is, what is our standard procedure for that piece of property?
Our standard procedure across...
Because it looks like it's mowed, you know, you can see kind of along the trail where you've mowed on the other side, but that looks like it's mowed pretty good. So, what is, do we do that?
We maintain a 10-foot swath, unless there's trees in the way, on the far side away from the homeowner. In other words, the other side of our trail. On the inside of our trail, if it's a passive area that's not irrigated, this is irrigated, right here. If it's not irrigated, we maintain 10 feet on the inside of the trail and next to the homeowners as well. Like, if you go farther down in the slides, you'll see big areas of passive area where we mow off the trail and we mow near the homeowners, but those are in non-irrigated areas. In the irrigated areas, they're mowing the pieces they're saying they're mowing.
Okay.
32 to 36 times a year.
How often do we mow in 10-foot swaths? Do we do it, how often?
We do it 12 to 18 times a year. We're shooting, we're winding up toward 18.
So, there, so on your property, you're doing it double that?
32 to 36, probably.
We're on a 36-week maintenance schedule.
Okay, and Malcolm, are you also doing fire ant control, or is it herbicide treatments? Or is it just you're irrigating it and what grows there, grows there?
Anything that's irrigated is, has herbicide, fertilizer, and mowing.
And I say that because, once you move into those more passive areas, it's natural.
Okay, so I think like what the mayor was saying is that you've got to understand that if we take this over, that's our schedule, you know? And I don't know that we would water, we don't water anything along that trail, correct?
Correct.
So, all that would go away too, because I...
Right, the only place we have an irrigation meter is in that one open space lot on Rose Bay. We have an irrigation meter there, but that's a big open space, correct?
We irrigate it, but they mow it?
That's correct.
That's basically a home lot.
Okay, so I had Ryland with his hand up and then I had Greg and then I'll come to you, Malcolm.
Well, originally I was going to say that, but Adam just said it, what, it was reflected in the, I looked up the old Parks RFP from last year and that was basically what it said for non-irrigated areas near the trail, which was 10 feet on either side of the trail, plus 10 feet up against the homeowner, adjacent homeowner, and then 18 times a year during season in which it would grow. So, that's obviously the difference, we've established that. So, but one thing I was going to say is, I've, to me, these are, this is town property and it's going to go to us. My recommendation would be, is that if someone, if residents have an issue, they're no different than a resident in another part of town that's not in this HOA that might abut town land. And we're not worried about that. So, I think if we're, I think if there, if future issues come up where someone has a problem, we need to address that as we would any other complaint from a resident in a similar situation, not in this HOA, if that makes sense. So, I mean, for me, the discussion of, the discussion of the delta between current maintenance and potential future maintenance is educational for these guys, but it's not going to help us come to a decision tonight. To me, it's not material to making the decision. It's our land, we got to take it.
Alright, Greg?
Alright, Adam, I need to learn a few things here. On the bottom side of the trail that...
Area two or area one?
Area one, where the water meter is. Is that a problem with topography, that we have that on this side of the trail? But what's the issue with that? Is that public?
No, I mean, that's probably their closest access was from the street access, so... So, location wise, I mean, no, that's not an issue. The issue would be, is if, if we took it over, would we just shut the meter down?
Is it, is it dedicated park space?
That is town-owned land.
No, no, that's not the question. Is it dedicated park space where we can't change it?
Yes.
It's, it's parks, all parks, park space.
That shoots my theory in it, because we did, we, in our HO twice, we had a situation like this and we leased technically that land to the homeowner and he just fenced it in and we were done. But if it's dedicated park land, we can't do it.
I think the only land that's not park land that the town owns is the new city hall land, I think, right?
Yeah.
And you can lease park land, I believe.
Well, the, the economic.
I mean, we do it, it's done all the time.
The EDC, what the EDC owns.
Yeah, but I mean, the town-owned land, I mean, to be simple.
This is next to my buddy's house anyway. If there's a problem, I'm gonna be the one that gets the text, nobody, so, I'm, I'm okay dealing with it.
So, you're saying that they could, the town could lease that to the homeowner?
Towns can lease park land for certain operations. There's, there's operations that occur on park land that are leased. Businesses run on some park lands with a multi-year lease.
Okay, so.
You have to be careful though if you're leasing it to someone that's gonna open it to multiple citizens as opposed to just leasing it and fencing it in for one homeowner, there's a difference there.
I think we're getting a little off topic. Okay, so, um, Jim had his hand up and then I'll come to you Malcolm.
Yeah, the, the only point I would like to raise, and I agree with Phillip and Ryland as far as we should maintain what we own, et cetera. Um, in, in the meeting we had last week and as presented in this potential solution, the way I see it, if you don't have a vested interest in something, you're not gonna care for it as much as if it's your own. And we talked about taking over the, the slip roads, uh, along the main, uh, Trophy Club Drive, uh, and, and making it town property and caring for it by documentation that would allow that to happen. Because that reflects on the entire town. People driving in and out of town on that main road get to see those slip roads. And if the HOA chose to mow it less frequently or not water it as much as needed, if they owned it, we'd have no say-so because it's their land. And so, by taking it over, we have a vested interest and we make sure it gets maintained in a way that reflects well on the town. By the same token, these illustrations and the various aerials marked in red, if we could do the same thing with that land and then put it on the November ballot, if you will, to transition the land over to the HOA who's currently maintaining it at a standard in which they have a vested interest, cause their homes are there and their communities and, and their kids play on that ground and so on. Uh, it, it may be that we have a solution by doing a few pieces of paper and explaining it to the town and just transferring those strips of land, the same way we're gonna transfer the, the, uh, slip roads. And they maintain, they water, we maintain, we water, and everybody's vested interest is best met by just transferring those pieces of land.
All right, so, Tim, then me.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd say, uh, that's a great thought, Jim. Uh, just talking ourselves, I bet there's a ton of people in that HOA that would say, give the town that land. They may not even vote for it themselves, is what I would think, is they'd rather us take it and take it over. If they don't live on those streets, a lot of these people probably would rather the town take it over and pay for the, um, watering and the mowing. That would be my opinion. I'm not saying we shouldn't approach it, but that's my opinion.
So, I got a couple of slides that have questions about. So, aerial three. The, um, th- this is the, the thing that Frank gave us, if you wanna look.
Yeah, that's, I, I'm the one that created that.
Okay.
Those.
So, that one lot, which looks to be a lot to me.
Correct.
Does anybody know why it never was built on? Our interpretation is because you needed to meet the hundred acre dedication and so you just carved it out.
I don't know what the planner developer was thinking, but, um, on the plat for that particular neighborhood, that line just goes straight down to the street and back up, so.
So, did anybody look at it? Does it look like a real lot elevation-wise? Maybe some grading issue, but it looks like a lot? Okay. Kind of interesting spot there, I thought. And then the other one is on.
Just to make note of that, in the plat, it, it calls out that the HOA will maintain the right-of-way. And that's it, on that big lot.
On that, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, the other one is, um, on, um, well. Aerial seven. Now, that looks like a trailhead aspect to me.
That one's, that one's a little different. There's a little strip there in the center that is called out as open space, um, common area. The area to the north there to the top, where it looks like a trailhead, that is town land. There's a water meter there that irrigates that trailhead area and that strip, so.
It's a drainage. The strip, Denton County shows the strip to still be owned by Lennar.
Uh, correct, so they developed that face.
So, so to me, that particular block, because of the trailhead aspect of it, seems like it would make sense to be town land and I guess.
It is.
It is town land.
Yeah.
Right? But there's a meter there. It's being watered.
Well, this, this was one of the few, there, there's two act, there's, there's two on the, if you go to aerial eight, that's the second one.
Yep.
These were not called out at all on the plat or the developer's agreement. This is, this is purely ours. This is one of the few that Ryland and I looked at.
But there's meters on both of them.
Right, not set by us. And this, this was actually, this was, this was kinda baffling to me because this was actually approved in two thousand thirteen. So, this is fairly recent and the HOA, I, I, the developer, I should say, just took that over, you know? And so, that was, that was fairly recent, which is, which kinda surprised me. I could understand the other ones, but we just allowed them to do that, you know, on our property.
So, if that is ours and you go down the, the thought that anything that's ours, we should maintain, along the street there, which is probably part of what's being watered, to make it look better, would be my guess, and mowed, in theory, the town would just do that. Cause it would be our property except for the right-of-way, but who's gonna maintain it? Typically, the landowner who's adjacent to a right-of-way maintains the area between the right-of-way and the street. You got that all throughout town that, that happens. So, somebody basically mows their lawn out to the street, they don't stop eight foot, ten foot, five foot out and say, no, that's right-of-way, I'm not mowing it, you know, that kinda thing. So.
But we, that's town land anyway.
That's town land, but, but, so, from the HOA's standpoint, on aerial seven and aerial eight and maybe aerial, when there one more Phillip? That was similar.
To me, this is, these, these lots that are owned by the town are no different than the lot on my street on Skyline, owned by the town where there's a trailhead. The, 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 the Parks Department mows up to the curb because that's just part of, that's considered part of the lot.
Does that sound okay to the HOA? If, if that's our land, you stop watering it, you stop maintaining it, our approach is gonna be, we maintain it. And if that happens to be that we're not doing it to the standards, what Ryland is suggesting is, a citizen's gonna come and say, hey, how come you're not mowing that? And we get that in other, um, I don't know that it's park land, but it's surely drainage ditches where the cattails grow and the snakes breed and all those things happen in other areas of town that are all new. And we can't seem to maintain those adequately for those residents, so, um, and it's partly because when it gets all wet and marshy and there's a lot of rain, we can't get in there to mow it anyway. So, it, it becomes an issue for everybody. So, are y'all okay, HOA folks, that, that if we're following that rule of thumb, that means these little areas would change? And are you okay with all these others where you're keeping them at a standard and, uh, and we take them over? That seem reasonable? Council, anybody object at this point to that concept?
Well, that's not the end game. This is just.
No, I know, it's just.
Yeah, I, I, I understand.
We're biting pieces, I think, at this point.
Do you want, the McQuary streets are kind of, I don't necessarily know the history of those water meters. Um, the ones on, let's see, the one at Redfern Drive, the one at McQuary and the one on.
See, and, and this is what's interesting is, this is two thousand thirteen.
About moral.
How did they, how did they even pull a meter? You know?
We, we did look at that, we did look at that. And Councilman Schaffner, one of the things interesting is, so when they, when they set the meter, the permit department addresses it, gives it the street name. They don't necessarily know, cause it's, it comes through the developer to us, to the mud. And then what happens is you have a meter that sits there. This meter was pulled a while back. And so, that whole area is being developed. Like, when you said, how do, how does this happen? Cause nothing's happened, it's all a construction zone and literally all of a sudden, boom, they sod it. Literally, but it's, and, and away it goes. It happens fairly quick, cause the water meters were already in place.
What do you mean a while back? This, this was not approved until late two thousand thirteen.
I know, but the meters, the meters were in, there was no development. That was just literally a demilitarized zone with the buildings, the houses going up. And so, there's, there's nothing there at the time and all of a sudden, they just sod it at a certain point.
There were houses being constructed.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but you wouldn't pull a meter before the plat is approved, correct? You can't pull a meter before a plat, the final plat, correct? You, cause it, you have no idea where to put the meter, you know? And so.
That's the way, the way that happens is, that's gonna be an aspirer meter and an address, it's platted, there's any issue.
But, but this is not platted, is what we're trying to say. These two properties are on a separate plat. They, they belong to the town. You look at Denton County, you will not find these properties on this plat. These properties are on a different plat. So, I don't know how they could pull a meter on these two properties in two thousand thirteen when it's not on this plat. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, all of our property there is unplatted, so it would've been, I don't really know. I mean, I assume they, they got a meter and just put it on unplatted property, but, and we have meters out there that, that are on property that's not platted because the entire hundred acres is not platted.
But that's us pulling that. I can't, I, I mean, so I can go pull a plat on somebody's property and I'm gonna pull a plat, I mean, not a plat, I'm gonna pull a meter on Tim's property. I need a meter on your property and they're gonna let me? You're gonna let me? Just, I don't, I don't quite understand.
If somebody comes in to pull a me, uh, pull a meter, we're gonna ask them, they just fill out the permit to pull the meter and they go over to the mud and pull the meter, we just take the fee. I don't know that anybody's ever tried to do that on a piece of property that wasn't their own, but, I mean.
But I would assume these have no address, cause they're not platted.
Well, they could, it's gotta have an address to get a meter issued, so.
Addressed.
We, we address?
I've got it, I pulled the, we've got the address.
I don't, how, how can it have an address when it's not platted?
It is, they are addressed.
You might be able to answer a little of that.
Malcolm?
On, on, let's see, there's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's nine accounts, water meter accounts that are, I think, pretty much all the ones that are on that aerial. Where the, the original water bill was in the town's name and it was transferred over to the HOA. So.
So, we pulled.
So, I don't, I don't have the application, I haven't asked the mud for that, um, cause I.
I can understand.
So, I don't, that might be how that, you pulled the meter and then transferred it to us.
I can understand all these way back, but if we're still doing this in two thousand thirteen, then I, I would assume we're still doing it in two thousand sixteen. And so, I hope that we, on our side, shore that part up, that we're not giving meters to addresses that don't exist and.
Okay, uh, that, that's kind of a separate issue, if you don't mind. I understand your concern, I understand your concern, but let's, let's focus. So, um, um, if, if nobody else has a statement, whether that's, uh, HOA or council, Councilmember Rowe, I think, is ready to try to make a motion that will start us trying to finalize something. Frank, do you have anything else to say?
So, they maintain Lilyfield too, I didn't know that.
Frank?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I, speaking about the water meters, if you want history, that's part of the email thread of, it was initially owned by the town, asked for the HOA to pick it up. The HOA paid seventy-five dollars per meter, at the HOA at the time, so the developer and whatever he had going on his board. Seventy-five dollars at the time to transfer the meters, which that was his money, which we, we won't worry about here. But, you know, being concerned about the money, um, looking back, the, the timeframe of fifteen months has been, uh, referenced quite often. And I did a few, a bit of calculation on the amount of money that was paid for the past fifteen months on water bills and maintenance, whether it was, you know, voluntary or what have you, on the meters. And it comes to a total between the landscaping being about twenty-four hundred dollars a month and the water bills being about nine hundred dollars a month. The HOA has paid upward of fifty thousand dollars over the past fifteen months out of Homeowners Association fees to the, the information that, that we're talking about, the water meters and the landscaping of these areas. So, I don't know if that's relevant to you guys, but, um, that's part of the dollars that have been paid. We have copies of the email trail that shows the town owned the water meters. The HOA was asked to take those over. There's information in there from the mud district of how much per meter the HOA would be cost, charged with the attachment of the water meters. And, um, you know, have that to be able to share with you guys if, if you'd like as well.
I'll just ask the tough question. Did you know it was town property?
As far as the.
The, the dollars you just referenced, maintaining property. I assume those dollars are talking about maintaining these pieces of property that you showed us pictures of, is that right?
Correct.
Did you know they were town property?
Not until I missed the May twenty-third meeting and I was given a July first deadline as the president of the Homeowners Association Board of Directors at the Highland, of the Highlands at Trophy Club. And that spurred me to do my, um, do my own bit of digging on this data.
Malcolm, did you know that it was town property that y'all were maintaining?
Yes, sir, that was, that was, all goes back to the handshake deal. Just like Councilman Perro was kind of alluding to where it's in the town's best interest to make those slip medians look good, um, and maintain them to your standards, like it is the HOA to maintain those interior, um, sections.
And so, those fifteen months that you're referring to.
Yeah.
It, prior to, I'm gonna say sixty days ago, I may be wrong, the, the HOA was not turned over to the residents, is that right?
Um, the HOA was turned over to the residents effective January twenty-third is when we had the first Board of Directors meeting.
So, prior to that time.
Correct.
It was owned by one of Merdod's companies.
Right, that's correct.
And Malcolm was maintaining that.
Correct.
And.
Yeah.
Malcolm was surely, or, or Merdod was surely aware of who owned it, I would think.
Correct.
So, is any of that money that you're talking about, fifty thousand dollars, prior to the time that you formed your own board?
Correct.
Is it, all of it? Ninety percent of it?
Uh, I'd have to do the math.
Some percent.
It's, it's a percentage of, yeah. And it was simply just as a point of reference that there's been a bit of skin in the game.
Okay, I understand that.
That's all it was, was just.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just getting all the points on the table, okay?
Yeah.
So, so in that particular timeframe of those same months, you, you've kinda brought up the subject. So, uh, staff, uh, what has been our investment monthly of maintaining, um, HOA property for that same period of time?
Slip roads.
Yeah, he's correct. The only, the only.
Well, um, the, now, we don't track the, you know, what it cost us to mow or.
Right.
You know, our guys to go out there because.
They just go out there.
They just go out there. But, a- and we also just have one, one irrigation meter that serves the entire area. But we estimated, um, approximately thirty percent of our irrigation cost is related to property that is owned by, uh, the Highlands HOA, which would equate to about, you know, approximately fifteen thousand dollars per year, just the water and irrigation costs.
Okay.
And, and can we get one thing on the record?
Sure.
Um, how long was, was the transition from the pump to the freshwater? When the pumps went down on the, uh, we're not calling them amenity lakes anymore, the retention ponds.
Retention ponds.
Uh, how long was the transition?
We estimate about three weeks.
So, three weeks. So three weeks. So everything that was being watered by the retention pond, the pumps, three weeks later was then all watered with?
Freshwater.
Freshwater. Okay, because, because we, we get information that you constantly use water trucks for months and months and months. So I just, I, I don't know where that comes from, but.
I can answer that for you. So that was referenced at one of the, one of the initial meetings, um, about, you know, when, when there was, I guess, there was an irrigation issue or what have you. This was the summer before I moved in, which I moved in December of two thousand fourteen. So December two thousand fourteen. So it was, it was during that summer that water trucks were used for, for whether the, the, the pumps were down or there was a break in the line or for whatever reason. I, I'm not sure. That was.
Come to the microphone, please.
That was mainly because we had planted fifty to seventy-five new trees that had all done.
So it was something on your end.
So it was, it was, i- if, the trees couldn't have survived if.
Because, because, because we catch the blame.
Oh, that was not the way it was portrayed at the end, when you turned over.
If I, if I.
There was heavy criticism of this town about the water truck.
And Malcolm, I think this may be correct, is that as part of the HOA, you had, or as part of the development, the developer had to plant so many trees. Those trees died. The developer replaced those and because it was the time of the year, additional water had to be placed on those trees. Is that correct?
They needed, yes, they were dying.
But that had nothing to do with the town.
Had nothing to do with us. We, we said that you have dead trees. You need to replace those trees.
I just wanted to get that on the record that.
The word hostage was used, by the way.
Well, there's, there's a lot of people that point that blame to us that we just stopped watering. And it was just a three-week period as we transitioned over.
And I don't know, I don't know what days or what they were. I think a lot of that system, it's so long, it takes so, it's such a big system. It takes a long time to run all those stations. And freshly planted flowers and trees and things like that needed more water than, I don't know how long, uh, did it take a couple of days to run through all of the stations, Adam?
Yeah.
So it takes a couple of days.
And you're welcome to, you're welcome to water your own property with whatever frequency you wish. The issue we had is we had residents coming to us saying, the town kicked us off of your water and we had to bring out expensive water trucks. And we're talking about two different years. I, I guess the old, the only point is, and Nick asked us not to get into this, the only point we're trying to make is facts rule the day. And we have dealt on all sides. Frank and I have had emails, Joel and I have had emails and phone calls, all of us have. We have dealt with way too many people playing fast and loose with facts that aren't really facts. And I think, I know for sure having the, having discussions we've had that we're not gonna do that anymore moving forward, so.
If I, I mean, I'm just gonna, we didn't control the irrigation, so we couldn't, if the trees needed more water, we couldn't turn that water up.
I understand, I understand. So, so that was, I think it's been clear that that was y'all's decision. And from this point forward, at least make sure that people understand that was your decision. No, don't blame us, kind of thing, for, for that, is what I'm saying. Now, I only went down that path because you kind of stepped over the, the path saying, you know, we spent a lot of money. We'd like to be reimbursed for that potentially. You didn't ask that, but that, I don't know why you brought it up if you didn't want reimbursed for it, but okay.
No, sir, it was just simply a point of ref.
Negotiation, I understand, okay.
Not even negotiation, it was simply a, honestly, a, a point of reference to, I guess, an earlier comment about casino nights that there's been skin in the game and there's certain things that simply aren't relevant to your, one of your opening remarks.
It's not relevant to my decision tonight.
That we are here to focused on a solutions-based, or work in a solutions-based environment.
Absolutely.
Of how we get this rectified.
So let's reset, let's, let's go down that path, let's stay towards solution. So Garrett had his hand up and Jim had his hand up.
Frank, I got a quick, Frank, I got a quick question for you.
Frank?
Just a clarification point, sorry. I don't, you gotta stand, we get to sit.
Hey, I get to sit all day, so.
So, just for clarification purposes, whenever you took over, your group took over from Essex and they handed it off to you. At that point, in those meetings, I didn't go to any of them, were you guys notified of the fact that the HOA or whatever was taking care of city property at that time?
No.
No, okay. But you, as Essex, knew that y'all were, correct?
Correct.
So y'all didn't tell the new board that they were taking care of city land, correct? Yes or no? No, okay. Adam, did you know that we were taking, or that vice versa was occurring? Did you have any idea that the city was taking care of HOA land and HOA was taking care of city land?
Yeah, it was in that email.
Okay. My point right now is, guys, they're volunteers, we're volunteers, you guys are professionals, you do this all the time. Give us a break and do what you're supposed to do and communicate to us. That's where my frustration lies. I mean, I am super frustrated that this is what y'all do day in and day out. You hand off to a board and go, nah. You don't tell us until we dig into something and find out. These guys don't find out. So all the other stuff aside, I just wanted to get that out there and I'm gonna shut up, but I am really frustrated about that. Just tell us what's going on.
Jim?
I just wanted to follow up the earlier comment I made and then, and then Tim's response to it. And, and I agree with you that most of the homeowners who are not in these cul-de-sacs in these areas aren't gonna give a hoot directly. But going back to my old real estate days, uh, buyers are finicky people. And if I'm buying a house and I got this lot over here next to this dry old patch of dead nothing with cracks and everything in the summer because clay soil does that. And I'm thinking about where's my kid gonna play near my house besides my yard, or can I go out and throw the, fizzby around with the kids or whatever? That dry piece of land, which is what it's gonna become if we don't water it, which we just said we're not gonna do probably, if we take it over, uh, is gonna be a negative effect on people who live near that piece of land and the adjacent homeowners. If that affects the value of that homeowner's house next to it, because it's not as nice as a lush green piece of land, uh, that could affect other homeowners down the road who don't live next to it, but still try to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
You know, sell the home.
I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. Okay, so you through, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Greg, then Tim.
Just for the record, Adam. The landscaping for the slip roads, who put that in and who maintains it, who replaces it over the past couple of years?
We do it all, but the.
But we don't have a price tag on that.
No, because it's, it was turf to begin with. The, only the center medians have the true landscaping. The only thing we've done on the slip roads really is to put a boulder in here and there to keep people from constantly running over our system. So we don't, we don't, other than that, we just maintain the.
Does yours escape?
Yeah. Well, I'm saying, the landscape is more just maintenance because it's turf.
All right, so Tim.
So at the end of the day, I think, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to be solutions-based. I think both the town has spent money and, and you folks have spent money. Uh, and we wanna go forward. I, and Jim, I, I addressed that. I, I don't disagree with you whatsoever. I do know a bunch of homeowners, I'll use Turnberry. If I said I wanted to keep the land next to my house mowed at a certain level and they're four streets over and we got it, at the end of the day, it's gonna be fifty grand, you may get a bunch of people in that HOA saying, do it yourself, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't wanna pay for it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying you shouldn't have. Go for it. I'm just saying, you'd be amazed at how, I don't wanna say self-centered, but, but they're, they're thinking more about themselves if they don't live there. I think the people on those cul-de-sacs and all that, I think it's a great idea to, to have them take it over. I don't disagree with it. But I, I do think, I think it was nice that you were trying to say, yeah, that you have skin in the game. I get it. And what folks are saying, I think it's been on both sides. People have been doing it. Uh, so I'd like to just move forward and, and, you know, not get nasty while we're trying to get this done.
So the chair's gonna recognize Ryland Rowe for a motion.
Yeah, first I have a quick question for Mr. Glickman. What, how would you formally refer to the four grass strips? Where's their location exactly? Because we've been talking about the grass strips like that's a proper noun for the last few months in this fall talk.
Weren't they in the slides?
They're in one of the many documents.
They were in one of the prior.
Yeah.
Documents that, that we, um, had given out. A- as far as a legal description or?
No, just a more location-specific.
Aren't they close to an end cap or close to a?
Well, they're, they're.
They're where there's a wall, basically between, between slip roads, there's walls and on, I think it's five total.
There's five.
There's, there's three walls where they have, the HOA has no irrigation assets anywhere near there. So on those walls, our line runs through it and is currently irrigated. And on well water, the expense is minimal. They can't reach those, so if we, if we break our system off from them, then they will have to basically install meters and possibly bore for each one of those walls.
To me, that's a nun, that, that's a, a, just an oversight when land was handed over, when plating was done. So I, so I'll, they'd probably best be described as narrow grass, sep- separate parcels of narrow grass strips that are near, that are near, uh, walls. Near neighborhood walls.
Correct.
So, so if we were holding true to the letter of the law, those narrow grass strips should be.
Transferred.
Transferred.
Along with the slip roads.
A, to the town.
Yeah.
Somehow. Right, which is, we'll have to go through that. Okay, all right.
And, and they, they currently maintain a portion of those. We're, we're only irrigating, so they're doing the mowing.
And once they're transferred, it's all.
Because there, you don't know, when you're mowing, you don't know when you've crossed that boundary because it's just a strip of grass up against the wall and you just go right through there.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Ryland, you ready to make the motion?
Uh, yeah, it's gonna be a long one. If you wanna, you wanna do one?
Yeah, do one, probably.
It's gonna be a long one. Paul?
You can break it up if you want to. I'm just saying.
Yeah, Schaffner will split it.
Schaffner probably split it on you if you don't split it.
I know.
I gotta listen to this carefully.
Okay, I'm making a motion to direct staff to work with the appropriate parties to transfer the five slip roads platted as separate parcels to town ownership, designating rights of way where necessary. And to transfer, uh, the narrow grass strips currently owned by the Highlands HOA adjacent to stone walls to town ownership. Um, and also to transfer the one strip of land running narrowly, running between McQuary Street and Redfern Drive to town ownership. And to direct staff to take over perpetual maintenance of town-owned open space currently maintained by the Highlands HOA, accepting any areas noted otherwise in previously approved developers' agreements. And to extend the deadline for separating the town irrigation system from irrigation on the Highlands HOA-owned land to September thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
So, so.
Read seconds.
Since the, the motion's on the floor, I'll give you the su- the executive summary of what that does. What that does is the incidental pieces of land that are tiny, superfluous and already tied into the town's irrigation would be transferred to the town. Slip road medians would be transferred. There's, there's a bunch of them. There's five that are, um, platted separately. Four are owned by the HOA, one is just nobody. Those would go to the town as well. Any land that the town owns that the HOA is currently maintaining, the town would take over maintenance, except in any case where a written agreement exists that creates a perpetual obligation for the HOA, which it sounds like that doesn't exist, but I think it, based on the ambiguity we've all discussed, we probably owe it to ourselves to double check those just in case there are any rights of way the HOA was supposed to continue to maintain in the cul-de-sac or whatever.
There would be these fourteen parcels on the sheet.
Correct. Um, and then obviously extending the deadline as previously discussed, so that these guys have a chance to work through what they need to work through, get their meeting together and have their vote and get their quorum and all those things.
All right, so my comment is that I'd like the mover and the second to consider that in your motion for the town to take over what the HOA is maintaining, that you put some kind of date or timeframe for that to happen. Can, with consideration of the same type of consideration we're giving them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Also, um, are you, are you going, in that motion, I think you should require, um, that the meters be turned over to the town. Somehow you're gonna have to deal with that.
Oh, yeah. So you just wanna amend it?
Yeah. All right, so you wanna amend the motion then?
Um, and what, what is, what would that require, Pat? Just, that's gonna be.
Well, one thing that, that was discussed was maintaining it the way that we're currently maintaining the rest of the open space. In that case, it would not be irrigated, so.
So we would shut those off.
Right. They would just cancel their account and that would be it.
I, I mean, to me, how we, how we maintain town land is not a, not something council gives specific direction on all the time. So to me, that's a staff decision unless you guys wanna bring it back and ask us how we should maintain those moving forward.
So I have a, are you making a motion to amend?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to amend to, uh, turn over the meters from, uh, HOA property to town property and what we do with it, you know, it's.
All right, and I'll second that. Now, the reason I seconded that is I realize that we may choose to no longer irrigate, but we hadn't made that decision yet. And I don't wanna turn back the meters and have to pay a re- meter free fee. Uh, kind of aspect, and that costs money. I'd rather just somehow transfer the meters to our name and if we decide not to irrigate.
That's probably just a paperwork issue at that point.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, it's our property.
So, eh, so that's a motion to amend and that did not include my.
The date.
Consideration of the date. So, uh, um, we'll just deal with this sep- this motion to amend separately and then come back to the date. Would that be okay? All right. Does anybody, any discussion about Schaffner's motion to amend, uh, dealing with the water meters?
One thing we could do is we could go in and internally, we've kind of briefly looked at it. What does it cost us? What would it cost us to do it to their level? And it's probably around twenty-five grand to do it. And so, I mean, that's something, we could do that analysis and bring that back and say, guys, and we could do that as part of the budget process.
Yeah, that's, doesn't have anything to do with this motion. I understand you're offering to do that and quite frankly, the council will wanna know that, I think. But, but I appreciate that. So the motion is to amend the main motion to have the HOA turn those meters over to the town with the intent that the town's gonna take over the maintenance. All right, so what's missing from that is by when? When you want them turned over by?
How long is it gonna take to run that through Denton County and all that? That's what we need to know.
Well, the meters.
The meters should be pretty.
That's what, that's what your amendment is, is the meters.
I thought I said immediately, so immediately is.
Okay, thirty days?
Thirty days is fine.
If you'll agree to thirty days, the second will agree to thirty days.
All right, I will agree to your thirty days.
All right. I, I just, immediately, nothing happens immediately in this town.
Well, I know.
We're gonna adjourn, not even immediately. Okay. All right, so a- anybody else on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? Show your hands. Amendment carries, it is unanimous. Now we're back to the main motion as amended, which is Ryland's motion. And I was trying to make a suggestion that, um, the town take over the HOA-maintained area by when?
September thirtieth?
You're talking the slip roads?
The new fiscal year would be helpful because we will have to adjust for that.
By September thirtieth? Does that seem okay to y'all? All right, so, uh, by September thirtieth, does the mover agree with that in the second?
Yes, sir.
All right, so the main motion, uh, that Ryland made would say by September thirtieth for that to happen and that's the main motion as amended. Are we clear? So I'm gonna stop for a moment because we're moving a little fast. Just wanna make sure the HOA people have a chance to make any comment or ask questions about what we're doing. Come to the microphone so we get it. Microphone. Malcolm?
So the water meter accounts, so we would just, um, transfer those over to town ownership within thirty days.
Correct.
And then we would continue mowing those areas up until September thirtieth or.
Or sooner.
Or sooner if the town and the HOA agree to that.
Yeah, because it was by September thirtieth was the deal.
Okay.
Somehow we gotta work that out.
Yes, okay.
That seem reasonable?
Yes, sir.
Frank, how about you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions about this? Staff, any questions about this? We ready to vote?
Just, just one question about, we did say that if they could not change everything over in thirty days, we would give them extended period of time.
Was that separate, that's a, that's a direction?
The medians at this moment.
No, that's what.
I mean, that's the, not medians, but the.
Slip roads.
Slip roads.
We're already taking care of them. There's all that, I've already made direct, I've already given direction to have us take over the ownership of the.
What else are we watering? What else are we watering?
If you say slip road again. You're stuck on these slip roads.
Well, the areas we're watering are, are the, uh, mainly the entrance areas to the Highlands.
And we had, we'd said that if they couldn't do it, and, because we, we said thirty days turnover. And obviously they can't do that, so we would say, we gave them September thirtieth, but we're gonna charge them monthly. Is that a direction to staff? That has to be in this motion.
It's not in the motion currently. And, and I, I think we're gonna deal with that. You could put it in this motion or we're gonna come back and deal with it.
I'd rather come back and deal with it.
Do you understand where we're headed? The, the next step is to say, okay, this is yours. And you gotta do something about it in next days. Does that make?
I'm just gonna stay up here.
Does that seem to make sense to you? Okay, we're not leaving that out. It's just trying to deal with the issue. All right.
One bite at a time.
I would say maybe a compromise would be since they're taking on the maintenance until September thirtieth and that's not gonna cost us any money to take over those properties until September thirtieth, then maybe we could continue the watering until that point. And that gives them a little extra time to figure out their plan, get that in place, implemented and work. and work through their HOA as well.
You're talking about of town-owned property, continue the watering of.
We're watering HOA property?
That's a separate issue.
That's in the motion.
Not the motion.
But what, what he's saying is because of that, I understand.
Because of that.
That's a separate issue.
That's why I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Yeah, that's what we thought.
It's just a wash.
It's a wash.
I understand what you're saying. Let, let's do, let's deal with that later.
Okay. All right. Motion is to, uh, for the town to take over the water meters that are on town-owned property, that you'll transfer those to the town by September thirtieth. You, the HOA would continue to maintain whatever standard you wanna maintain there. For.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah, yeah, the water meter.
Water meters thirty days, and the maintain is by September thirtieth.
But we'll be paying for water in thirty days.
Yeah, so, so if they transfer them in thirty days, we're gonna start paying for the water or stuff they're watering.
But we can turn it off.
You could turn it off if you chose to do so, or, or deal with that issue separately. All right. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. So Jim Perro votes against, everybody else for. All right, so, um. All right, so, this time I would entertain a motion to deal with, um, HOA property maintained by the town. Not maintained, but watered by the town.
Already did.
It was in that motion? Oh, okay. It was all in that motion?
Yep.
All right.
We can go home. Well, y'all can go home.
So what?
We're gonna be here.
So, so.
What happens if they don't do anything by the end of the time? We just shut off our water?
You don't have to worry about that, Tim.
But you, but you have to get everyone to vote on an assessment.
So, to give you an update, so we had, we had a special assessment meeting, um. Like two weeks ago. So we needed two hundred and eighty-seven homes represented to be able to pass a special assessment. We had two hundred and fifty-two. Um, so we were a little short. Now, we've re, so what we did is on the, the proxies, we gave it a deadline of June the thirtieth. So those two hundred and fifty-two proxies and representations are valid until June thirtieth. We've recalled another special assessment meeting on June fifteenth, which the percentage of homes to be represented goes down to ten percent. So, we already have that ten percent represented in proxies, and so that'll be taken care of. And even if we didn't, we went ahead and called a second meeting fifteen minutes after the first meeting on June fifteenth, which takes the percentage of homes to need to be represented down to five percent.
Okay.
So, when I tell you that, it's been taken care of. It's been taken care of. One of the questions I had of you gentlemen is, um, a- a- as a, as a moving forward, we'll have to go through, obviously, a rebidding process or re-looking at disconnecting from the town's water supply. Um, what direction would you give to us? Should we work with Adam and Tony, and then we'll have our irrigation work with them once again, just to verify that what was the case previous is still the case? Are you fol- you tracking?
Yeah, I'm with you on this. I, I would say, and, and Glickman and Adam can, can, can weigh in as well, but my intent with the motion I just made and asking that we just take ownership of those little grass strips meant that the, the proposal that was in place prior would still be valid from a technical standpoint. Now, you guys.
So, yeah, I, I would wanna valid, you know, not validate, but verify it, measure, measure twice, cut once, right? And so, then we'll, uh, we'll have it taken care of, 'cause, uh, the irrigation guys are already teed up, special assessments are already taken care of. Sorry, we should be good to go.
Great.
All right, how do you feel about the decisions? Are y'all? Y'all good?
Feel good about it. I appreciate it. Again, sorry for missing May twenty-third, um, but I do appreciate it. And at the end of the day, I think I've shared this with you guys, some of you guys via email, some of you guys, you know, mouth to ear, is I, I hope from here forward, we see this thing as residents of Trophy Club. Uh, we've got a great town going, a lot of good things happening, um, and we, and we lose this vernacular of HOA versus town versus town staff. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Everybody, thank you for coming tonight, uh, for that, and, um, hopefully we got a good solution for everyone. All right, so if, uh, there is no objection, it is seven thirty-five, and we're gonna take a ten-minute recess. We are in recess seven thirty-five. It is seven forty-five, and we have returned from recess. Item number three, consider to take appropriate action regarding options for ownership and management of operations of Trophy Club EMS, including fire protection services, discussion of same. Council, um, uh, if you will recall, um, we had a, a mud director approach the council some time ago, uh, say something in general to the effect of, um, he would be in favor of having the town somehow acquire the fire station assets. And, um, of course, when he made that statement, we could take no action. It wasn't agenda. Uh, council directed staff at a, at a subsequent date to look at that financially and legally in some cases, so that we could have some discussion, and so, uh, that's on the table tonight, and the reason we have this item agenda. Recognize there might be, uh, some questions that you have that, that either might be legal advice related to this, uh, are in fact related to personnel matters, which is what, um, four A one is related to. And those personnel matters are specifically those employees of the town who might, who would be affected if in fact they didn't remain employees of the town. And so if you have questions related to that, uh, we could go into executive session to, to discuss that issue, although the reality is we don't totally understand the other side of that equation. We understand our side of the equation. If, if those employees who were fire department employees became mud employees, we don't understand the financial impact to those people. Uh, but they're there so that you could ask some questions if we decide to do so. Uh, Stephen did, uh, handed a, had a handout for us. Some of this information we have, uh, looked at, talked about in the past. Were you gonna take us through it, Stephen, or, or anything?
I think w- we're looking for direction on how would you like us to proceed at this point? And then we also have, uh, Chief Lasky and Chief Arata to answer any type of specific questions you may have regarding the fire department and the fire EMS operations, and their observations from being, uh, over it, and kind of what their thoughts are and how it fits within what we do every day. And then there's also financial questions that if you would like to ask us questions, we can take, take you through the, take you through that spreadsheet. We don't wanna cover information if you've already got it.
I would like to go over the financial information on the front page, I think, of the handout you just gave us. I call it the front page. Um, so, um, it is showing, uh, fiscal years twenty seventeen through twenty thirty-one, which is, uh, showing bond payment, um, on fire station. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then, um, the second column, bond payment if called, the first call date is twenty twenty-one.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. And then the next column says reimbursement reserve, and that's sixty-eight thousand oh ninety-six. And that was a aspect, as I understand it, I don't wanna speak for the mud, but as I understand it, um, the fire station, when it was constructed, mud two had cash that was used to put in on the building. And, uh, prior to the consolidation of the two muds, this was a way that, um, mud two was reimbursed for its cash.
Correct.
And so, um, uh, that's been continuing as to be an aspect of that. I think partly it's included, um, so it is, uh, part of, um, the operation of the fire department when they look at the taxing aspect of the mud.
Correct.
Is the way I would look at it. The last column from that first set of columns is the capital lease on the new fire piece of equipment.
Correct.
Not truck, but engine.
Apparatus.
App- apparatus.
That would work, ladder truck.
Ladder truck, okay. Thank you. I knew I would call it wrong. The other one has a ladder on it. I'm just kidding. And so, um, uh, if in fact the council wanted to go down this path, uh, you can see the, the financial aspect. So, Stephen, explain to me the comment at the bottom that says maximum recommended offer for fire station, two million nine hundred eight thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars.
Well, that, that amount comes from the total of the bond payment if called, which, uh, includes basically the principal and interest payments up until two thousand twenty, and then a full payment of the principal amount, uh, that contin- would continue to be due in, uh, twenty twenty-one. And then also the reimbursement reserve. Um, I, I thought that adding those two items together would be the maximum amount that I would think would be an offer, um, to acquire the fire station. Uh, the town would probably go out and issue its own debt and, um, pay for that, which means that the mud would basically make their bond payments up till twenty twenty-one, and then would have the principal amount to call those bonds and pay them off at that point. Um, and then it would satisfy, buy, satisfy the entire reimbursement reserve. Um, I don't know if council is amenable to, to that, but that, that's why I set a maximum on that.
So the two million nine oh eight seven forty-seven represents the total of one million eight eighty-seven three oh seven added to one million oh twenty-one four four oh.
That's correct.
Yes.
So that's the reserve replacement and the bond if we called it to pay it off early.
Correct.
Okay, um, uh. So the second sentence there says, add mud fire tax to town, town tax, no additional total tax to residents, now tax deductible for the PID. So, um, uh, roughly, there is a mud fire tax of seven cents per one hundred dollar valuations.
Correct.
Seven point two 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 cents. It, it could change.
That's correct.
Uh, in order for the town to take over this new debt, and because the debt disappeared at some point, we would potentially have to raise our taxes seven cents. But based on forecast of new homes, property values, all of that, you feel like it would not take an increase in our current property tax rate to incur, to pay for this debt?
That's correct.
Correct. It would just be simply transferring the seven cents from the mud's tax rate to the town's tax rate, and no total increase in the tax rate to the taxpayer.
How could it stay the same if you're losing revenue?
Microphone.
Y'all can't hear? How, how could it, how could that stay the same if you're losing revenue? You're, you're losing part of.
Well, we have.
So how would that just transfer seven cents, seven cents?
All right, Stephen, you wanna answer?
Because we have, because the operations of it, it, if you notice what, what, there's actually a delta there. So if you notice that last column that says projected town tax added, and what we're projecting the mud, it's about twelve thousand dollars difference. That's what we'd be short. Now, to issue the debt, we have the ability between, as the mayor mentioned, growth, valuation, and debt capacity within our existing rate and the way we've structured our debt to be able to absorb issuing any COs to cover that payment to the mud.
Now, the, the, so, uh, did that answer your question, Philip?
No.
In, in essence, the, the ta- the fire tax collected by the mud from area that is outside of the town of Trophy Club, we would no longer, the citizens of Trophy Club would no longer benefit from that, is my understanding.
And, and what is that number?
I don't know that I know that.
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Say that again, Stephen.
It's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Annually.
Correct.
I mean, the mud right now doesn't get to tax anything in the PID. So you're, you're, you're offsetting some of what Solana is with the PID.
Of course, we're remitting that to them.
That's right.
Through the assessment, so.
That's right.
Still, we're still getting that money. It's not like they're losing out on that money.
So this, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars does not include, uh, them getting part of the emergency services fee from the PID. Right? That's just.
That's correct.
That's strictly.
Their property value times seven point two two two. It's in that area.
Well, it, it's basically the difference between what their Tarrant County properties are and our Tarrant County properties, which basically is Solana, uh, times the seven point two 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 cents.
So that's how you calculated it?
Correct.
And that's the snapshot today.
That's right.
So it's not accounting, whereas we will count growth, we're not accounting any growth in that district. We're just, we're just saying the snapshot at this moment.
That's right.
That's right. Now, um, uh, the, the last sentence says pay principal amount of capital lease if allowed as payment of, for, for the ladder truck. What do you mean if allowed? What are you saying there?
Well, I, I don't know exactly what their financing arrangement was on the ladder truck. Um, it's a seven-year capital lease. I, I don't know what the interest rate is. Um, it potentially may be better to pay that off in cash than to pay the interest on that ladder truck on a seven-year lease.
Okay.
We just don't know the terms.
And, uh, options obviously are, are that they continue to pay their own lease and we pay them for that lease.
Correct.
Uh, the other option is the lease is assumable.
That's right.
We don't know that for sure. Uh, and the other option is, um, it may could be paid off earlier, and that's the best financial decision for us.
That's right.
All right, uh, so, any questions council has about this financial sheet? Uh, apologize, audience, that we don't have a sheet for you, uh, but if you have a question, you're welcome to.
I have an extra if.
Ask it if anybody wants to. All right. Any other, any questions about that? All right, uh, Ryland?
Quick one, uh, just to add to what Philip said, I, you asked the question of how does the smaller tax base account for having the same tax rate? Well, Stephen did mention we have existing debt capacity, so that's the trade-off. The trade-off for giving up that one fifty thousand in, in, in revenue today that the mud district can collect that the town can't would be that the town would be giving up additional debt capacity to keep the INS rate the same, uh, to absorb that hit.
Well, that is, that, that is correct. We, we have a series of capital projects that we're talking about. If in fact, as we consider that in the budget, if this was to go this direction, you'd have to deal with that separately. This would affect the amount of debt we could issue for other capital projects if, assuming you issued ca- debt for this. Is that right?
Correct, correct.
That's your cost, basically.
That's right.
On the other end, the mud would have additional capacity for their water and sewer projects, 'cause basically we're taking three million of our capacity and relinquishing three, three million of theirs by taking this off of their, their hands.
That, 'cause the fire station and the truck would no longer be a liability for them.
That's right, correct.
Okay. So I, I guess from the financial aspect, I, I'm gonna make two comments and see where this goes. Um, I think the comment was made, uh, by Director Thomas, but don't hold me to that. But, but, but somebody made the comment that got to me that said, uh, sell the fire station its assets for fair market value. That, that was a phrase that we used. And so, I look at that a couple of ways, and, and wanna see how you look at it. Number one, I don't know that you can determine a fair market value for, of our station. That can't be moved and would be hard to be used by something else, and so who else is gonna buy it but us, kind of thing? Secondly, uh, for the most part, it is the citizens that have lived here for years that have been paying for that fire station. And, and paying something higher than what the debt is seems like to me an undue burden to the residents of current mud one, to me, that have been paying taxes and continue to pay. Uh, so I'm not in favor of that. The, the reimbursement reserve, I'm, I'm gonna have to be convinced that that would be part for wha- what we're buying. I don't see that's our issue. Quite frankly. Quite frankly, uh, that was a financial aspect that was, that was developed when there were two MUDs. There are no more two MUDs. There's one MUD. And if in fact, i- if that figure had something to do with how they calculated their tax, I don't see that's a town problem to pay for personally. So I'm not going to be in favor for that. However, I am in favor of being able to make an offer, uh, to say to the MUD, we'll buy the fire station and take over that debt and deal with it however we want to deal with it. And we'll either take over your lease on the ladder truck, uh, or pay it off however that is best done. And make an offer to see what happens there. That's just me personally, uh, to deal with that. Uh, I think it's, uh, a good thing to do. Uh, not discussing any of the items thoroughly that are on page two, which, um, kind of deal with some things that we don't necessarily control. So anybody else, uh, want to make some comments or questions about this? And, and then Stephen referred to asking, uh, the chiefs if they want to make some comments about it. So Garrett?
Why do you believe it's a good thing to do?
Fair question. I think that the fire and EMS services belong best under town management and control. I recognize that water and wastewater services are a much more complex issue and not necessarily to me as important in the aspects of providing for the safety and welfare of the citizens. I believe safety and welfare of the citizens is squarely placed on the council. And I'm not sure that the way we have it arranged today where surely the MUD can provide for the safety and welfare of its residents, uh, in the MUD, and we have a contract to provide that for the PID, but our PID people don't necessarily have voice and vote in that area. And so I believe it's a council job to do that. And I think it's best that it belongs there. If vice versa happened, I figure that there, there are lots of things that we need the fire department to be involved in, from special events to emergency preparedness, to inspections, to, to, uh, permitting aspects of, of what are needed to plan review. And that's best if it's under the town leadership to totally be able to control that and manage that. And then it's our town manager's responsibility, and if it's not done adequately, council can deal with that appropriately. Today, it's hard to deal with that. So that's why. Fair question. Anybody else? Jim?
I'd just like to get some insights from Chief Lasky as a man who is an expert in this field and someone who's been exposed to various forms of government control. Uh, what your thoughts are on the town operating the fire department versus the utility district operating the fire department or a combination thereof, just whatever your thoughts might be.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm going to apologize upfront because this is not a short answer. Um, I want to begin by saying, first of all, it's been an honor to serve as your interim chief for one month. That being said, uh, there were several things that came that just, I don't know, you know, I say revealed their heads today or whatever about this entire process. One is, let me just point out, and Chief Arada's been a great partner, uh, with, with this venture for me. We're already running, the town is already taking care of the EMS, which is eighty percent of the call volume that the fire department runs, the ambulances and that whole end of it, and they own the employees for the most part, you know, that, that whole end of it. There were several things that popped up today, and I, I have the opportunity to visit with a lot of different people. And I get asked when I travel now or I'm somewhere, so what's it like? Tell me about Trophy Club. And I'm like, it's a great community. It's a great place to raise a family. You know, you'd have to be blind not to see how incredible this, this town is. So tell me about the fire department. I begin to tell them about the fire department and I begin to explain about two, two entirely different boards of elected officials, two different budget processes, and I'm talking two different budget processes. And, and some of the difficulties to just get things done. That's the first, that's the first big ring of fire, no pun intended, that we have to jump through to explain to people. I was trying to explain to a chief officer today who said, when are they going to post the job? You know, meaning he would be interested to be, you know, to apply for fire chief. And I said, well, when, you know, we talked, there's kind of a game plan we're working on because my job was to come in and, and do whatever I could fine tuning wise and get the fire department where they need to be, really ready for whoever comes in and takes it permanently so they could hit the ground running and can provide a consistency in leadership. So I tried to explain to two different boards and he says, count me out. And I said, well, hang on a second because we have some incredible firefighters here. You know, it's not that we're living in a rundown shack like I've been at some fire departments that are just, you know, the, with the apparatus, different things are good. So he said, well, I said, how many years do you have where you're at? He said, well, I've got twenty-two. I said, perfect. What pension system are you in? And he told me, I said, well, you'd be starting all over again. Because your pension won't carry if the MUD was to take over because it's a totally different pension system. And, and that's, and I'll get back to that in a second. That's probably the biggest chink in the armor with this, with his. I just want to remind everybody, we have fifteen very dedicated firefighters down there who have been neglected one way, shape or form, and I'm being very upfront and honest. I've got a building that's owned by another entity that is new, that has leaks everywhere. They have things that have been neglected since the building was placed in service that was missed through final inspections. We're, we're in the process of repairing. And I'm just speaking frankly and bluntly as your employee. We've get, we're behind with protective clothing, with making sure that our firefighters have two sets of protective clothing. So a whole lot of different rabbits we could chase to say, who's at fault? I just know coming in here trying to provide you the best for the people that are out there, I can't do that with firehouses that are not taken care of. And that's not just the guys. I'm not talking about the guys. It's things that were missed initially. Protective clothing that hasn't been issued, things along those lines. So wherever that falls, it's like juggling about fifteen double-edged swords when you're dealing with two different boards. When it comes to the town actually managing everything, it, it's, and I was, I was talking with Chief Arada, it's like, almost like it's been a lease-to-purchase option, if you will, if you want to look at it from the town. We've been actually leasing a building, a fire engine, a ladder truck, you know, and, and a brush truck and half of a, you know, a couple of cars. But we've had the people for the most part, we've had our HR people, our pension, all our contributions. We have fifteen firefighters over there that are a little bit nervous. We have fifteen firefighters that, and I mentioned this to somebody the other day, and it was not met with, uh, what I felt was the nicest response. We just can't go hire new people because we're getting changed and maybe offer a different pension system. And again, I'll get back to that. When it comes to emergency management, there are emergency service districts out there. There are ESDs and there are fire districts that work independently of a municipality. The problem with that, and I personally worked for, for them, is it's like having your right arm severed when you're not with your building department all the time. It's one thing to do fire inspections, but when you're having to either get in your car and go drive somewhere or whatever all the time and there's that lack, it's just, there's a separation when you don't have the team together. When you don't have those people sitting across from you on a Wednesday at a staff meeting where you can ask questions and you can say, I need to do this and we need to do that and we need to plan for this. There's still not only some building to, to go on here, but we have a big time infrastructure we need to take care of so we don't have problems in the future. I've personally experienced not having those people in front of me. We were like our own island, our own entity, and, and that was difficult. Take that to the emergency management side of things. I've been through the flooding. I've been through tornadoes. I've been through plane crashes. I've been through, you know, train wrecks. I can tell you firsthand how important it is to have all your players dialed in and on the same page when it comes to that. Again, more difficult to do when you separate police and fire. You separate animal control. You separate all these different things that are big, big players when you have a major incident going on. The pension plan, um, TMRS is not only in, in the state of Texas recognizes one of the best pension plans, it's recognized as one of the best in the country. The challenge you, you, that we would have here for the residents would be, I have five firefighters that are not vested yet, which is there under five years. Unless I'm missing something and, and Mr. Saddle helped me if I'm missing something, because I've, I've done my research, if, if things were to change and go that direction, those that are vested, we get their money pulled back from the town, their match, and that would go away. The money they've put in, these young firefighters that are starting families and have little kids at home, that money they have, they have to immediately roll into an IRA or something so they don't get taxed on it. That may not seem like a lot of money to some people, two thousand or three thousand dollars, but it is to somebody starting out their life with their family, with their loved ones. The other side is, who takes it even worse, are the firefighters that have eleven years in TMRS. Because unless that pension is a, I, I, I think it's, I, I, I've never heard of it, where someone will say, well, we're just going to let you take all your money, put it in our pension plan, and it's going to be a wash. It doesn't work that way. So what you're going to be having to do is, because you're vested, you freeze that pension, what you have, and it's almost like starting all over again. The message from the one chief was, well, if I'm in TMRS now, if I go to another fire department as fire chief, my years continue in that system. I don't lose out. To go from twenty to twenty-five is huge in TMRS when you go to retire. When you tell someone, well, you're going to leave with twenty-one and you're going to have to freeze it till you're fifty-nine and you start over a whole new pension program is a recruitment and retention killer. And I don't know how else to say it. I feel like I'm, you know, because I'm here representing the fire department as a whole. I don't want it to appear as I'm betraying anyone on either side. I'm being very blunt, very honest. Recruitment and retention is huge. What I don't want to deliver to you, if I have any means, is I don't want to give you a fire chief that's going to come here just for two years because he or she's young and they're just doing it to catapult themselves, go somewhere else and not see their plans. So that's not fair to you and not fair to the people that own businesses and, and own houses here. The other thing you don't want is the forty-year retiree that's coming just to get vested again, who has no long-range plans, because then you're just spinning your wheels. And then you don't want the guy who I sit across from when I do assessments for two large assessment firms, that's on his tenth or her tenth or twelfth interview, there's a reason why they're not getting hired. This is the town of Trophy Club and you deserve better. You deserve a fire chief that's going to come in here and take things and run where you're going to turn the corner and see how well-kept it's already being done now. They're already turning that firehouse over, the guys are. That they're going to turn the corner and you go, do, do we have a fire department? We haven't heard of any, have we have any problems with the fire department? Aside from an occasional human error, which people make, we should be the last thing, you should be going, you know what? They're running like a finely tuned oil machine down there. The residents are talking all the time about how we're out in the neighborhoods and we're, and we have reading programs, literacy programs, and we're doing stuff. It's hard to do that when you're chasing things all over a building, trying to get stuff taken care of and trying to re-energize a force that feels like they've been neglected. The pension system is huge. What I would hate for you to see is this be the five-year, every five years we're hiring new guys because they got vested with another pension system and now they want to go to TMRS because they see the benefits of, of another system. Again, I'm not going to say I'm a hundred percent, and I'm looking at Stephen, but every bit of research I did, the phone calls, and here's the other thing I, I, I mentioned to someone, I said, for someone who wants to take over the people, if everybody here had a pension and you were, you, whether you, some of you were vested, some of you weren't, wouldn't it be fair to you if I was going to take over the people to bring in a representative from TMRS and explain the current pension that you have? And then bring somebody in from the other pension system and explain to you and your family what's about to happen? Again, I must say, we have fifteen firefighters sitting over there that a couple of them go home and their spouse says, so what's happening? And to be told, well, if they don't want to work there, then tell me I just have to hire more firefighters is not the answer. So as a whole, as a team, what is best for this town would be to bring it all together, in my personal and professional opinion, under the control of the town manager, mayor and council. I think that would deliver the best product you can in public safety to the people who live here. I think in the event of a tornado, flooding, whatever happens, ice storm, whatever we face, fires, everything else, you know, fires are dangerous enough, but we can handle those a lot easier than we can something bigger when we're all together as a team. Right now, we're, we're so disjointed, I can't get the parking lot striped. And I can't get things done that I'm just used to saying, we need to get this done, but I can't because, well, that's their, this property and that's this. So the guys that say, well, I'd be happy to paint it, I can't because we don't have an agreement. I- if it's, if it's, if it's the curbs you can't even get painted without asking for special permission or additional funding, what else is going on? You know what I'm saying? And I just, I wouldn't feel, I, we, we wrestled with this. We've talked about this and I've wrestled. I, I couldn't come here and just not tonight say, well, you know, it could work either way. You know, anything could work. But the best option for, for the people that live in this town, own businesses, would be for the town to take control. They have HRP, they already have a large volume of employees they deal with. They already, you know, you, you know, we're, we're talking about, I don't know the exact numbers, I won't speak out loud, but we're talking about almost another third to a workforce or whatever that bring along insurance, medical things, family, you know what I'm saying? The town already, we already take care of that. We already have the ambulances and we run eighty percent of the calls over there for service. We're talking about, and I know it's, it's not me writing the checks, so apologize. We're talking about a building and some, you know, a fire engine, a pumper, a brush truck and half of a couple of vehicles. And, and again, the other side, and I know it's a big investment upfront, but in the long run, I've never been one to plan for just tomorrow. I'd like to be able to see you fifteen, twenty years and I'll go see that worked out great because it, it's, we've come together as one. It's just totally terribly disjointed right now. And again, there was just no short answer to say that. The biggest chink in the armor is, is, is the pension. You know, we might be talking totally different, to be honest, if you could just roll right over into another pension, guys don't lose their money or their, you know, like I said, to, to someone who's already retired or has a very secure occupation, may not seem like a big deal, but to a young firefighter, you know, that's starting their family, but starting to try to put money in the college fund, it, it is a big deal. And I, we've got some pretty incredible firefighters there, and I'd hate to see either we lose people or more importantly, we don't attract the best people. This is, I, I said it before, this is Trophy Club. This is a pretty cool town. I mean, there's a lot of great stuff going on here. You, you deserve and they deserve out there the best.
There's no, there's no reason that the MUD couldn't have firefighters as employees and put them on TMRS, right?
They can't.
Why not?
Because you're allowed to have one pension system for your class of employees.
Um, but I'm saying they could switch to that pension system.
They could go back to TMRS.
Okay. So there's no, there's nothing preventing them from going back to that if they said that's what's best for the firefighter's retention and all that?
Well, they would have to switch all of their employees back.
I understand that. But I'm saying that is an option.
So how does Irving do it? And how does Conroe do it? And Odessa, they all have firemen, their own plan. So in other words, they have the fireman retirement plan is what it's called. That Irving has that, Cop, uh, Conroe has it, Big Spring, Odessa. So it's just their firemen. They are self.
Collectively bargained?
They're self-funded, I guess.
Could be self-funded.
So you can do that, but you can't do.
We can't pick and choose what retirement system we have.
There's, there's a lot of, uh, agencies through meet and convert.
We could start our own, like Bedford, Bedford had their own retirement system.
But no, this is just the fire.
Yeah. So Fort Worth, for example, Fort Worth is a self-funded pension and firefighter and police have their system, and then all the other employees have their system. And I don't know if, I mean, I, I don't know.
You just can't do the other, you can't do, you can do that, but you can't do the two, is what you're saying.
Yeah, you, we couldn't have the county and TMRS offered.
Now, ju- just to answer that, partly from history, is when, when the MUD took over a series of employees, which were water and wastewater employees and some office staff, and they became MUD employees, I was on the MUD board at that time. And when they chose that separate retirement system, one of the significant benefits to them was that the match was different. And so as opposed to fourteen percent, it was a twelve percent system. So right off the bat, there was a cost savings, not necessarily a benefit to the people, but a cost savings. Everybody that was vested in the town retirement program at that point that went to work for the MUD, the MUD paid upfront for them to be vested in the new plan. So there was a cash inflow to the retirement plan that allowed those employees to be fully vested in the new plan. So if you went back and looked at the twelve percent versus the fourteen percent, I suspect maybe that has never paid off at this point because it was a substantial amount to pay into it. And so those firefighters, and I don't know what the MUD will do, but those firefighters that are already vested might be sitting there saying, well, you know, would you, would you allow us to be fully vested in the new plan? Which they might do. The MUD was willing to do that with the rest of the water. Which they might do. The MUD was willing to do that with the rest of the water, wastewater, and town staff to accomplish that task. When I talked about special activities, and, and the chief talked about that fact, when people get ready to do a special activity in town, they come to town and say, I want a parade permit, I wanna this kind of function that I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna need services. I'm gonna need police navigation of things. In some sense, it maybe makes sense that we have EMS people stationed, uh, for things. So, so those kind of things happen, and we typically in this town have needed the fire department to be involved in that function. Whether that's be on-site, because it makes sense if you're having a five K, that maybe the ambulance people are stationed at the five K place, so that if something's happening there, they're there to respond to it. But there was an example where Byron Nelson High School was having, uh, two baseball games, and the, some other organization was doing an elementary track meet or something like that. And, and so the chief had, uh, the firemen come out there, and they brought the fire truck and the ambulance, and guess what? A kid got hit in the eye socket with a ball, and our guys were there, ready for that. It seems that things would work better. We're gonna have a honoring wounded military big function in August in town that's gonna have a five K. Uh, it's gonna have a golf outing, it's gonna have other functions that are happening. How do you provide adequate coverage for all sorts of things, for literally a thousand people coming to town when you're not under one roof, to make sure all of that stuff gets handled correctly? For the consumer, for the citizen, to come to one place, come to the town, talk to the town manager, or whoever's appropriately in charge, to get that done. Today, what that would mean is, you come talk to the police chief, and either the police chief goes and talks to the fire chief, or the, talks to the town manager who talks to the fire chief, or the person who's needing that goes to talk to the fire chief, and then you've got this, who's in charge where, what's the coverage, who's scheduling, those kind of things. Uh, I think that's what the chief is, is talking about, that's what I was talking about. Currently today, if we get an EMS call, EMS leaves the house first, because there's not as much to get ready to leave, and guess what? Fire truck, ladder truck leaves within moments of that aspect. Is the fire truck really needed at the place that they're going for a medical emergency? The truck isn't. But the fact is, the ambulance has two people on it. If in fact, depending on training, depending on aspect of what's going wrong, you needed a third EMS person, they're there. It's not like, oh, I have to go back and get a third person, or now I have to dispatch the, the fire truck for that. That's one of the reasons it runs. You might say, well, it looks like it's a waste of running the fire truck. Uh, and, and maybe it is in one aspect, but, but that's the procedure, uh, that happens. And, and currently, those guys really don't think, they don't take a second thought of do I report to the MUD, or do I report to the town manager when they get a call? They've already made that decision that life and death and protection and safety of people is their job, and they're gonna do their job. The other side is something else for them. Who they report to, how they get paid, that's not what they think about when the alarm goes off. And so it, it just seems that that's why it's, 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 it's one of the times that we could do it, and surely the MUD could say, well, the opposite of that we wanna do, and come to the town and make an offer, uh, to do that. Uh, the second page is a lot of information of things that we don't totally understand how that affects retirement plans, our insurance plans, our funding plans, or, or taxing plans. We don't understand all of that. That's not our job necessarily. It'd be nice to understand all of that. But it really comes down to, do we make an offer or not? Do you wanna at least pursue that aspect? And that's where we could, could deal with that in, in what, in that sense. So Stephen, and then I don't know if you wanted Chief Arada to say something or not.
I just wanted to, I did a quick search for those cities you mentioned, and I think I've got them all, but they're either civil service, for those particular, which is voted in by the people, for those particular things, which means they can offer certain things. In Odessa, I can't find if they were civil service or not, but the firefighters actually have a separate city-funded retirement system that is unique to them. So they provide, the city is the retirement plan.
So all I'm saying is, is they have two, but you can't do the county, and that's what I was trying to establish.
That's good clarity, thank you.
The other thing I will say is, on, on the retirement system, I looked up the, the, they, they did a two thousand thirteen, uh, report, the state did, on pensions. And I was surprised that the county retirement has a hundred and twenty thousand active employees, and the mun- municipal side has a hundred thousand. So it's actually bigger than the municipal side. Now, I don't know where it stacks up on firefighters and govern, you know, county employees as, you know, on, on the deal, but it's, it's not a small retirement system by any means. And so, um, so that was one thing, and it actually had better rates of return, uh, according to that report. But, uh, but that was the, one of the things that sort of shocked me, is that they had a hundred and twenty thousand compared to our hundred thousand.
Counsel, anybody else?
Just, uh, maybe you, maybe you can explain the pension. Is there an unfunded liability that's to be paid into, uh, if they switched over to the MUD?
Well, I, I think I could answer that. They, they did fund a portion, um, I believe a hundred and thirteen thousand when they bought into the system that they're in now. Um, I believe, I don't know if they did that to get those employees vested, or exactly why they made that payment. Maybe they, you know, you, we can contribute as much as we want to reduce that unfunded liability. So I don't know if they were doing that just to reduce their rate, or what was the intent of.
So if someone was a, a eleven years into T M R S, he would keep that, correct?
Stay in, yes.
So when he retired in twenty or thirty years, he'd get eleven years of that pension, and then he'd get nine years if he was twenty years of the other pension. So would he really be losing money, as far as from a pension, his monthly check?
Well, I think that's what Lasky was talking about. If you look at those actuarial calculations, there's a big difference when you pass twenty years or something like that in a fund as to what you can really expect to get out of it. So if you've divided your retirement into two funds, you probably aren't gonna get that little extra bump at the end of it. That's why, where I think recruitment gets more difficult. If, if I'm that person, and I've got eighteen years in one fund, and I know if I get past my twenty, what my retirement is gonna take a big jump, I am not gonna lose that probably, unless there's no way for me to avoid that. So that's part of it, doesn't have its, deal what they bought into. When we made that decision on the MUD, we paid in extra to keep the rate lower. So the twelve percent aspect was not gonna be twelve percent if we didn't pay money upfront. That's because there's this unfunded liability that's rolling in. You don't know about those people that you're all of a sudden bringing in. And so, uh, you're, you're betting on that, and so the MUD made a choice, I believe, my memory is, it could be wrong, but was, let's put that in, that gets those people vested, and it keeps our rate at the minimum.
There was one employee who retired from T M R S specifically for that reason. They retired, and then they started over with, with them. I don't know their financial, I, I wouldn't know, but there is a big difference if they would have stayed in probably T M R S, because their funds continue to earn, you have a greater amount.
Somehow, I, I went to a MUD meeting, and they were saying that their rate of return, or their guaranteed minimum rate was like one percent higher than T M R S.
That's correct, that's correct.
So does that come into play at all? I mean, you get a couple of bad investment years. I mean, I, I, I mean, I just don't know.
Well, they're both guaranteed by, by the state, so.
But one's high, but the, the MUD is now higher, though, it's like one percent, I mean.
Correct, that's correct. That doesn't mean that it won't earn more.
I understand that.
That's correct.
And I, Garrett had his hand up, and Tim had his hand up.
I was gonna say.
I'm sorry, Ryland, and you had your hand up.
Last time we had a conversation about who should run this stuff, I, I feel like we make the assumption that the MUD is gonna make the wrong decision. If the MUD controlled the fire department, w- w- we look at things just with such a negative slant. I mean, if there's a possibility of them switching over to T M R S, their whole staff, and our interim fire chief tells the MUD directors that this is what's best for the town, we're making the assumption that they're gonna say no. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way we're debating this. I mean, I, I, I just, I, I don't know why we always look at it that way. I mean, if that's the right thing for them, either one of the bodies can, we can keep the system, or they can change the system. I just wanted to point that out. I feel like every time we have a conversation about this, it's, it's, it's an assumption that they make the wrong decision every single time. Whether they do or they don't, I don't know, but I think we gotta make the assumption that they're gonna do what's right for the firefighters. We gotta go in with that assumption, not that they're gonna do what's wrong for the firefighters. So if our interim chief says, you need to be on this retirement plan to have a good chief, to have these good things, I would assume, I wanna make the assumption as we debate this, that who's ever in charge of that board, or whoever's in charge of that group of people is gonna make the, the decision to do what's right for the town.
I, I think, I think you would have to establish if they can even get in that retirement system, because of being a, a utility district, it's a little different than a municipality.
All right, so I had Tim and Ryland still to come, and then Jim.
Yeah, I agree, Garrett. I, I think we should give them the benefit of the doubt, that they would try to do the right thing. Uh, everyone here knows that I'm pretty high hor, on my high horse all the time about trying to build culture. That's one of my big things, and in the process of doing that with my company, and going back in core values, and mission statements and everything else. And I think, for me, it, you know, we keep talking about money. Uh, but at the end of the day, our customer, our residents, deserve the best product, right? And, and, and the best product is to, um, to give the, the firefighters the best chance to succeed, and to have, have a great career, then we're gonna have better firefighters. I don't wanna throw the mud under the bus, but if you talk to ninety percent of the people who come into the town, just from when they deal with the person at the front desk, to anybody about a bill, they are not customer service oriented. It's gonna take an entire culture change to do that. Uh, I'm not saying they won't do it with the new directors there, I think they're gonna be on top of that sort of thing, but it's going to take an, an entire culture change, kind of like what we've done here over the past year, year and a half. So, so I wanna be real cognizant of that, the fact that we wanna give these firefighters the best chance for success, the best chance for a long-term career, and that's not just about money, it's about quality of life. And if we give them a better quality of life and a better quality of employment, they're gonna be better employees, and they're gonna, and they're gonna, uh, interact better with the citizens. So that's, that's my high horse, so.
Stephen, you mentioned when we were talking about retirement plans earlier, you said that the MUD could go back to T M R S. Were you saying that they were on it before, or was it just that everyone was considered town personnel through the personnel contract?
Well, they, they were on it before because of that reason, that it was trophy club entities, they were on
They were on us.
Ours, as basically on our payroll.
So they've never explored that op- possibility, it may not even be possible. So this is, this is the root of the issue that bothers me, and it, and that, that goes, it goes through every, every aspect of this that we will discuss. And first of all, overall, we need to have a single reporting structure for the, for the fire and EMS. It needs to be run as one organization, with one boss, reporting to one board, with one budget. I'm not gonna support any solution that has a personnel contract over here, and assets over here. That's a mess, that's what got us where we are today, which is an I L A that was enabled one party to terminate for whatever reason, and leave, somebody's holding the bag with people, and the other person's holding the bag with assets, it makes no sense. But realistically, what we had, the reason that happened, the reason we're here talking about this tonight, is because as of February, when the contract was terminated, or cancellation notice was given, that MUD board did not want you to hire the fire chief. They did not want that. They, they are town employees, so it was Stephen, your responsibility ostensibly to do that, but that board did not want you to do that. I looked at that and said, I disagree. I have faith in Stephen to hire the right guy, and I appreciate Chief Lasky's input. First time I talked to you, I said, you don't have to polish anything. You said you were being blunt, so I appreciate your bluntness. You can always be more blunt with me. Never be too blunt. But we are now talking, we're off, I, I don't wanna say in the weeds, because it's not in the weeds, it's a significant issue, but we're now down the road talking about the right retirement system for a group of people that we don't have the ability to control the retirement system thereon, if we don't own the building that they need to work in, and we don't own the fire truck that they need to drive. And we've got a board that doesn't even think you should have hired him. So what's to say that they're gonna say, here, here's the fire station, here's the ladder truck, et cetera, et cetera? And if they did, I gotta be honest, guys, we, we spend millions and millions of dollars every year, a delta of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide a better product. I start to lean towards what Tim was saying, I wanna provide a better product. But then I have to look out for financial welfare of the entire town. A town full of people who won't hear what Chief Lasky just said, who won't hear what he said about neglect of employees, won't hear what he said about neglect of the building, won't hear what we've talked about, about retirement plans, and us not, ostensibly not trusting the, uh, the MUD board to, to make the right decision, or even maybe they may not even be able to. They're not gonna hear any of that. If you go ask anybody on the street, fire department's great, everything's great. So I'm looking at absorbing seven point two cents on the tax rate, plus eating the equivalent of another one and a quarter cents in debt capacity to make up the difference for not having the Solana tax base. So that's eight point four, eight point five percent I'm adding now to what I've gotta deal with. The MUD, the MUD could then theoretically lower theirs by seven. Are they gonna do that? They've got a wastewater treatment plant, I don't necessarily know that the project's going all that well. They've got a, uh, yeah, but it's all, it, Nick pointed out that's a different tax, but they are taxing, they're setting a rate to cover their costs, right? So they're looking at, do we raise, do we lower our rate, or do we keep it the same, and use that extra debt capacity to, uh, finance some capital improvements based on a water study that I've heard some doubts that some people might have in? So again, it all comes back to the trust. My concern is, we do this for all the right reasons, and we get lucky and strike a deal, which we couldn't even agree on how to use a building and write a ground lease together, but we're somehow gonna strike a deal on this, but if we do, rather than seeing my MUD tax go down seven and a half cents, I'm gonna see it go down two cents, and my total tax burden just went up five. And now I'm the counsel that raised my hand and went for that. And if, if, and if, if we had a fire department that people in, in the city viewed as being deficient, I would be able to get my head around that. But the fact that the customer, as Tim points out, views everything as hunky-dory, even though I know it's not, I'm very torn as to how to deal with it.
And Jim had his hand up, and then I'll go back to you.
Yeah, I'd just like to make mention of the fact, a- as important as the retirement system is, and, and retaining the good people and getting the good people to come in, the, the biggest part of Chief Lasky's presentation that caught my mind was delivery of coordinated fire and police services in an emergency. And, and he made it pretty clear that since the police chief works for the town, and the fire chief is split between two, when we have the issue with whose equipment, whose house, and everything else, I'm, I'm looking at the picture of, in an emergency, i- i- it's certainly based on his experience, his knowledge, and everything else he's told us about, is to the advantage of our residents, to have our police department, our fire department, our animal control department, all, uh, working together under one head. If there's an emergency in this town, they're not gonna call the MUD, they're gonna call that man right there. Uh, the mayor's gonna be in charge of disaster in this town, and he's gonna be the one that the newspapers and the TVs are gonna come and talk to. And, uh, if, if we've got the MUD getting involved in some way, shape, or form, because their policy, or their procedure, or their whatever is not being followed or used correctly, then that doesn't provide the smooth service that our residents deserve. And so I would certainly take his advice, uh, to heart, and, uh, and take whatever steps are necessary to unify our police department and our fire department into one body under one head, and that would be the town manager.
Uh, Phillip had his hand up, and then I'll speak.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think the MUD would disagree that, that the mayor would be the, in a state of an emergency, that the mayor's the de facto head of, of, uh, everything. To Ryland's point, let me just throw out something, or, or bring us to reality a little bit. We're, we're, we're assuming that they agree that it's two point nine million. And that's a biggest, a big assumption, because we, we last year, the three, Eric, Tim, and I were on a fire committee. And we didn't really dive down into the numbers, but we know there are some on the committee that did dive, dive down into the numbers. And they, on our report that we presented, that number was five point three million. So that's how far, that's how far we are off. Now, that may be, that may be including what that may be including what you don't want to pay for, which is, uh, something I guess that can be discussed. But obviously, they're, they're a long way off from our two point nine. So it's not necessarily going to be two point nine. So it, your tax rate may be even higher, can, you know, depending on what number they believe it is.
I appreciate that, uh, observation. I appreciate the comments everybody's made. This is part of what we do to make a decision as we debate the pros and cons. Uh, it helps us think through this process. Phillip, you're absolutely right. There's no guarantee they'll accept any kind of offer or even ever make a counter if we were to make an offer. Um, but I started by saying, it'd be nice to come out and make an offer. Yeah, it, either they reject it or they don't. Now, Tim, I really appreciated the culture change comment that you made. It really solidified for me how I feel about this issue. And, um, how I feel has a lot to do with what I'm, the amount of pain, so to speak, tax I'm willing to pay is how I feel. Uh, if I think things are going well, then I'm not quite as upset, uh, about taxes. Um, in the sense of the federal government, things aren't going well. I get really upset about some of those kind of aspects. But I feel good about the direction of our town staff and the quality of what they provide and the leadership that we have in place. And I think that goes a long ways to setting a new standard for the town of Trophy Club, that we're different. We've made that in a number of areas. We're continuing to invest in that aspect, and I think this is an investment in that direction. Now, I asked, uh, our town attorney, I, I gave him a little notice that I was going to ask this question so he had a chance to look it up or, or at least know before I just put him on the spot here in the council meeting. I sort of just tested him. Well, we'll see how good he did with two hours' notice. Uh, uh, I don't know that this is the right thing to do or not, but it's been this crazy thought that I had, and that was uh, to call for a binding referendum that the town would do. Now, the bounding referendum would be to say, town, I want you to buy the assets of the fire department. Now, the reality is that citizens could say yes, but the mud could say, we won't sell it to you. And so the legal question was, well, if it's a binding referendum, it's a binding on the council. It's not a bounding, binding on the mud. And can you do something like that to ask the citizens, what would you prefer, uh, given all the facts? And let them answer that. Uh, and can you do that, given the fact that you realize that the answer of the citizens might be yes, but the answer of the mud might be no? So that was what I asked you to try to look up.
That's correct. It would be binding on the council, but it wouldn't be binding on the mud to sell. Uh, the key would be in how the question is asked. I don't think I'd ask it so broad that to bind you to buy it at whatever price they're willing to sell it.
Yeah, but
Does that make sense?
The contract's up in October, and a binding referendum would be November.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and one, David and I just had a few minutes to kind of kick this around. At what point do you become unbi- unbound? You know, it's, it's, you know, it, do they say no, and then you're done with it, or how long do you pursue? I mean, there's some things there we'd have to really kind of explore.
I said it was a crazy idea.
And, uh, we all agree.
You all agree?
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Everybody agree, raise your hand? Look at there, two. Okay, everybody don't agree? Okay, never mind, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do we have any idea how much it is to repair the fire station? Is that going to be on us if we take it over? Uh, are we going to, uh, demand that they do it before we take it over?
Most of, what?
I don't know. What was that? Well, run for reelection, and then you can say that.
Throwing shade.
Okay, we're losing control here.
Someone escort that person out of here.
Chief Whitnutt.
Most, most of what, um, the two of us, uh, Chief Rod and I, with, with the firefighters there have come across that are deficient with the building, has already been taken care of or is in the process of being taken care of. Um, a lot of the smaller items our firefighters have taken upon themselves, because they've taken ownership of the building in the way of they don't own the building, but they own it in heart. And they're the ones that have made certain repairs. They're the ones that are taking care of things outside and so on and so forth. Yes, we have a roof problem right now. Um, yes, we have, uh, another issue with, uh, electrical. I mean, there's about fourteen different things that are wrong with it, but they, it's all a one-time come and fix it and get it done thing. Uh, we're looking probably with eighteen, about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars we're looking at now and getting repairs done to the building that either were missed when it was initially inspected or whatever. I don't know. You know, what I do know in the month I've been there is, I'm about as objective a person you want, because I'm not beholding to, you know, anyone. I, I'm, I'm trying to do the best job I can to look at everything for you and say, this is what we need, and this would be best. Um, building-wise, uh, once we get the roof taken care of, we have, we found another leak, but once we take the roof taken care, taken care of, the air conditioner, that one's done. Um, electrical's the next biggie, and then a couple of smaller things. Most of the other things, the firefighters have stepped up and said, we want to take ownership of the building. We want to take care of some of the things that we can, and they're, and they're very capable, and they've done a great job with it. Uh, there's a different, uh, attitude, if you will, um, with a lot of things down there. We, we had all but two of them that were out of town today show up for Chief Thomas's retirement celebration. Uh, that should send a message right there. Um, so, th- there's really good things happening, but roughly, I think we're looking with the estimates at between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars to get all things done. That quite frankly should have been taken care of a long time ago, but we're in the process of doing it. That's water under the bridge.
And, and some of this is not neglect. Some of it is a design issue. You know, that just, it was needed to be corrected because it just doesn't, functioning correctly. And so it's not, we're not talking lots of money, but it is to fix it so that the air conditioning works correctly and has
It should be fixed when there's a problem. I mean, that's basic management is when you find the issue, you fix it. That we all own buildings here and run buildings. I mean, that's what we do.
Am I, am I, again, if I can, my, my, my point, you know, was before that I found a folder in, in a pile about a pension system. You know, we've got fifteen employees there that deserve the time to hear from two different pension boards if this was to, you know, most municipalities, most districts would, if you were going to take over someone, would say, you should be able to hear from the people that are going to be controlling your pension that's going to pay you for the rest of your life, if you will. We're talking October, you know, it's a short amount of time to get, there's a lot of things that would have to, to roll in to get that side of things done. Uh, I know it's a huge investment of how you look at it. Like I said, for me, I'll say it again, it's like juggling all kinds of sharp swords, because I, 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 I need to do for you what's best for that fire department. Um, again, uh, the building, it's, 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 it's a good building. Um, there's a lot of issues that we have to take care of that would help us respond time-wise, and there's a long list of other things that are being done internally to take care of things. How we actually respond and how we report things is being taken care of. Um, there's a lot of things that leadership, good, sound leadership in a fire department, I'll just pick on the fire department, will take care of all that for you. There are things we're doing right now between the two of us and with the firefighters there, that are, that, that are, they're just long overdue, and it's this, it's just this resurgence, I guess it is, of energy that the firefighters are feeling, because the town stepped up and said, we're going to give you the money for the buy uniforms, because we have people wearing ten-year-old uniforms. You know, there are certain things that are going on, and for whoever, there's all kinds of people we can blame. I'm not saying one side or the other. I'm just saying, they're feeling this energy and they're taking care of business. Um, you know, the building is, it's not a bad building. Uh, there's just some things, once we get some of the things taken care of, aside from lightning strikes, or, you know, act of God, those kinds of things that happen once in a while, and when you lose some electrical devices, it, it really, we should really be just running. They need to get to a point where they're out doing more programs in the community and, and more time with the citizens and the children, and then take care of things. And we're all, we're getting there. We're, we're getting there. I keep telling the boss, you, I'd, I'd love to be able to see what you think come August when we've got a whole bunch of things done.
All right, so I, I want to go back to the financial figures just for a second. Did you have a question?
Well, I was just going to make the comment.
Okay, let me ask this question, and then I'll come to you. I apologize. Did I miss you? Okay. Um, Stephen Glickman, the, the bond payment, if called column of the financial figures, one point three million.
One point eight.
I'm sorry, one point eight. Yeah, I was looking at the last one. One point eight, almost one point nine million. If, if we were to make an offer, assuming we were to say, buy the station, and we said for not to exceed one point nine million, that says that operating budget has to cover the roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for four years, and you wouldn't issue a bond until 2021 for the one point two, one point three?
Well, or, or we could, um, issue the debt, and then they would either refund or, you know, or put the money in, you know, put the money away to make those payments.
And defees it.
Right. We would probably recommend issuing now, because we're going to get the best interest rate now. So, but we could, we could analyze that with Mark McClany, our financial advisor, and determine what would be the best course of a- action, uh, to handle that.
And if, we don't know whether or not the debt on the building can be assumed or not, do we?
We do not.
But the fact that it's a tax, is it a tax-back bond?
Yes, it is.
For the building?
I believe it's a GO bond.
It is a GO bond. It was mud one's GO bond.
Okay, so in essence, um, I don't see how that we could take that over. It, it have to be defeased. Is that right?
I believe so. That's a, that's another.
Again, that's a little bit deeper than we want.
Yeah, it's probably a Mark McClany and Julie Partain.
I, I think that was part of that five point three.
Yeah.
That there's a cost involved.
I, I think so too. Okay. So, um, um, and then as for the, uh, capital lease, um, again, the question is, can you take over the lease or not take over the lease? Are we paying the mud, if we assume we want to do it, paying for six years? Uh, and at the end of the time, the title changes. But not all of this, depending on how you worked it, would have to affect our tax rate the next year. All of that is balanceable based on how you work things. It depends on how many road projects. It depends on a lot of things.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I just need to understand it better. So, uh, Garrett had his hand up, I believe. Garrett?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I've, um, I have the same concern that Ryland has, and that we could slip down a very slippery slope where taxes are increased dramatically, because of the way we do this transaction. However, I do firmly believe that there should be one reporting structure with the EMS and the fire. I do not have a preference who that is reported to. So if we're going to make a motion or move forward or something tonight, I might say that, um, it would call for further discussion, but I, I'm okay with the mud taking over fire EMS or the town having fire EMS. I don't have, it doesn't matter to me which one has it. I just think that one of the two has it, and that we get some assurance that our taxes aren't going to go up dramatically. I've lived in this town longer than anybody in here. Maybe not Bill. I don't know, when you came to town, but I've never felt unsafe. I mean, I remember when we had a volunteer fire department and the police drove around in, I don't know, Saturns or something like that, with lights on top of the car. I didn't feel unsafe then. Um, I mean, it was something like that back in the day, I mean, early nineties, but it's, I, I haven't never felt unsafe, because police and fire and animal control worked. It's a small town. We, we've had disasters where there's fires, where we had to get a tractor. Remember, we had to get a tractor out, push some stuff over. Everybody scared their house was going to burn down. I didn't, I don't think people sat around and wondered, well, is police communicating with fire, is fire? I think that EMS and fire should be under the same roof. I support that idea. As long as we can guarantee that our taxes are not going to go up, I will get on board with that idea. I have no dog in the hunt, whether it's under the mud or under the town, just as long as it occurs. That's my thought.
All right. Uh, just my feeling, and it may not be the majority, but, but one way to start it is to make an offer. If you, Garrett, if you believe option A or option B, uh, you never know about option A. If option A is the town take it over unless you make an offer.
Right.
I mean, we are approaching, uh, a deadline, in one sense, that's coming towards us, and we're already in the budget cycle, and we need to deal with that. Now, my understanding is that, uh, you know, new mud directors want to try to deal with that cancellation, uh, and, and if they deal with the cancellation, which they hadn't had a meeting to deal with at this point, then that surely gives us more time, uh, to deal with it. But I do think that, that we are in a critical situation to hire a new police chief who can make a long-term commitment to this town.
Fire chief.
I mean, we're already worried about that. Don't worry about that, Patrick. We haven't told you yet?
Start working on your resume, yeah.
Big slips in the mail.
I'm glad somebody caught that. Patrick just died over there, didn't he? Well, you've been doing such a good job as
He was already on an app getting a tea time.
Fire chief.
He can add sell a lot of small towns.
What's that resume?
Well, the uniform kind of looks the same. Just changed the patch. I'm sorry. To, to hire a new fire chief is im- is important, and, um, I, I realize you got a comment from, from maybe one guy, uh, about that, but, but I think we've got quality people helping us make a decision. Um, and, and so my preference is to, to try to deal with that. I don't have all the answers that I need. Um, and, and so, um, I, I think if I was trying to deal with something to move it forward, is that, is that I want more detail about what kind of motion we might make to deal with this issue financially. Uh, I, I'm sitting here looking. I could, I could say, well, I want to make a motion that we, uh, offer them, uh, one, not to exceed one point nine billion for the fire station and not to exceed seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the capital lease. Uh, you know, I could do those kinds of things, but then there's the alternative to that, that if I was trying to do the budget cycle, um, uh, maybe I'd dealt with it differently. Um, and when I issue that debt has a lot to do with what I needed that motion to be. Uh, and I don't have enough data here to do that, although I, I would support making a motion that we go the next step and get more detail and decide whether we want to make a motion or not. I mean, I don't know how you feel. If you, if you don't want to make a motion, then it kills it now. But if you want to consider a motion with more facts, then we can do it, uh, at our next meeting, assuming that we have that. Yes, I'll take, uh, citizen comments if you'd like to
State your name.
State your name and your address.
Eric Jensen, twenty-two eighteen McLean Avenue. Uh, I had the pleasure of serving on the fire EMS committee sometime last year it was, with Tim and Phillip, uh, Director Carr, Director Toomey. Uh, I had the opportunity of addressing the council, uh, some time ago, and, uh, the statement that I made was that I could be convinced on a business decision that the finance, the best financial decision was to move the EMS to the mud. But there was a more important issue that took overall precedent. Just as the chief said, the pension is a huge deal, and I, I, I don't think y'all are grasping this. He said it a number of times. I told you that night. People may disagree with me. They're wrong. It is a huge deal, guys. Okay? You cannot, you cannot have those guys, uh, lose their TMRS. It's a huge, huge deal. So, um, just wanted to make sure, I, I stress that to you. It's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. You know, I, I don't want to just keep kicking this down every mea- that's the reason I, in my motion was very specific to call it for this meeting, and I, it's disappointing that we get these numbers at the agenda item, because your questions might have been able to have gotten answered had you been provided something sooner, you know, rather than later. And so
But we don't actually have the numbers, because we don't know what the tax rate.
We provided these numbers to you previously.
I've never seen these numbers.
We provided them at our last meeting.
Maybe I'm wrong.
These numbers?
I think it was about, almost a month ago, or
That these exact numbers?
Uh-huh.
That's exact sheet.
Oh, you missed the needle.
Well, then why, why are your questions answered?
And, and I mean, no, I think what I, I want
I guess that's what I'm saying. Okay, if he provided, if you did provide these, why, why are Nick's questions not answered? So that we can say, okay, here's what we're going to offer, and, and we can push it down the road. I mean, we keep dragging this out. They keep dragging it out. We need to say, okay, here's I mean, we keep dragging this out. They keep dragging it out. We need to say, okay, here's the motion. We're, we're making this offer to buy the assets. And put it on them to either say, nope, here's our counter offer.
I think my problem, Philip, has been trying to formulate a not to exceed amount kind of concept. I could make a motion that says I want us to make an offer.
No, I, I understand, but we've got to come up with that number. How do we get to that point?
And I think the reason for that is, even though I looked at these numbers before, and, and Stephen pointed out that the one point eight eight seven million might be a better choice to go ahead and sell those bonds now and pay that off because the interest rate is low. And, uh, the question then is, can we do that? And is that something you're willing to do, uh, as a GO or CO? How, how are you willing to take action on that aspect? And, and so those are the factors that I don't know right this minute.
Well, I.
If you want a discussion, that's great. I'm more than willing to try to discuss those and get the facts, but.
I think that we need to make a decision because if you listen to him, which, which we have all night long, he's saying that those guys don't know what they're doing. They don't know what direction they're going. And so either, and I think that there's some on the mud board. You know, when that motion came out, that, okay, we're going to take it over and Jennifer's going to run it. I think that came out of frustration. So in other words, somebody just needs to step up and take it and say, all right, here's our offer. The ball's in your court.
I agree with that. We want to see if they're willing to sell, make an offer and see if they're willing to sell. I mean, that's.
I make a motion that we, uh, develop a firm price or at least a, a fir- a, a offer, a financial offer to the mud board of, um, one point nine million for the fire station, s- seven hundred sixty-five thousand for the capital lease and, um, not consider the reimbursement reserve. And if I receive a second, I'll talk to why I chose that.
Second.
Third.
Wait a minute. Sanders moved.
Jim.
And Perro seconded.
Now, let me just, um, well, you, you said you wanted to discuss that, so I'll go after you. Thanks.
I didn't try to be totally specific to the dollar amount because I, I recognize that would be a little bit issue. I think the one point nine million for the, for the building, um, the issue of any maintenance, that'll be taken care of i- in advance. The day you close, it's like anything else. You have an inspection, you deal with those aspects of buying, uh, that would be dealt with in that issue. Uh, the capital lease, if we're off a little bit, I just wanted to make sure it happened. Y'all know my feelings about the reimbursement reserve. And, and I just believe strongly that it's time to make the motion, uh, make the offer. Worry about the details. As you're saying, Philip, we need to come out and do something and, um, I'm willing to, to put the line in the sand, so to speak. So Philip. Mayor, do you want to add a deadline? Otherwise it just sits past the expiration date? That's a good question. Uh, I would say that, uh.
That June twenty-one is their next meeting, isn't it?
Well, they can't even talk about it till June twenty-one, so I'm not sure that's.
Ten P M.
That's fair either. Um.
Yeah, it's got to be at the beginning of the.
I'm going to say that, uh, the offer is good for, um.
The end of June, that would be July one.
For sixty days, uh, and that we get that offer out this week. So that's what I'm trying to say. So I'm making an offer of one point nine million for fire station, seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for capital lease of the ladder truck and a sixty-day offer window.
Does that?
Does the second agree?
Yes.
All right.
Well, well, that, does that cover all assets? Or are they going to say, well, wait a minute, you didn't, you didn't pay for this. You didn't pay for that. You didn't pay for.
It's got to be everything.
You know, so.
It, we didn't itemize that. In, in my sense, all those assets were not, all those uniforms and those kind of things weren't financed.
Okay.
That's operating expense. It's been paid for.
A dollar.
But it's a good point. All right. Any other discussion? Ryland?
Yeah, I, I do want to say that I'm a hundred percent with you on the reimbursement reserve. To me, that was, that was a financial technique that they use when consolidating funds some years ago. And I don't really see why it would be our responsibility to cover that. Um, I would like to amend your motion to, to state in the, in the offer that the sum total, um, would be inclusive of all, all wholly owned assets of the fire department.
F, F and E, everything, yeah.
You, you may want to say wholly and jointly owned assets.
Yeah, good point. I was just thinking things that were, weren't financed, but yeah. Good call.
All right, so Ryland moves that the mo- the offer includes, uh, the sum total of all wholly and jointly owned assets of the fire department.
That seems like a damn accurate way to state where we're, what we're getting at unless someone else.
Who seconded?
Philip. Philip.
Councilman Schaffner, uh, seconded. All right. All right. We're on the motion to amend. Any discussion about that?
I just, I want to elaborate on that point as it also relates to the context of the broader offer, which is that if, if this is to proceed, i- it's going to have to proceed in good faith. And I'm going to get to more on that in a minute when we speak on the main motion. But part of good faith is if there's an asset or equity in an asset that's already been funded by taxpayer dollars, it needs to be transferred with no cost. There's, there's no paying right, right pocket into left pocket. That's, that's not, it's not a way to treat our residents' money and the way they fund us. So that was my intention to make that clear by amending this motion.
All right. Anything else on the amendment? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. We are back to the main motion as amended. And that is, uh, to offer, uh, to purchase the, the, uh, fire department building, fire station for one point nine million to take over the lease or purchase the lease for the ladder truck for seven hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And that this purchase offer is good for sixty days. And that it include the sum total of all wholly and joint-owned assets of the fire department.
Clarification, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Does that include the land under the fire station?
All assets.
That's all jointly owned assets.
I just want to make it clear because of what the annex building is on someone else's land and I don't want to have that question come up ten years from now.
That's an excellent point. Maybe we should specify that just to make it clear.
I'd feel more comfortable if that was clarified.
So we've already amended the main motion. Uh, would you, you might want to make a motion that you, that the, all the assets include the land.
An amendment.
For the fire station. Make it.
I'd like to make a motion that in this offer, we include a statement to the effect that the land under the fire station is also included in the purchase.
So Perro moves to amend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lamont seconds. That, uh, the, the phrase wholly owned assets of the fire department, add to that, that this offer includes the land that the fire department property sits on.
Yes, sir.
Any questions about that? Where I say fire department, I probably should say fire station as a more clarification of that. All right, any discussion on the motion to amend? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. We have a motion to amend that the offer includes in that price, the purchase of the land where the fire station is located. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Back to the motion as amended. Are you ready to vote on the motion as amended? Do we have any other comments?
Do you want to make one?
All right, so Ryland, uh, and then Garrett.
Yeah, I, um, I went into earlier my thought process of the, the, the various uncertainties that this type of arrangement would, uh, would, would bring up. And the proposal on the table basically has us, would have us at a minimum cutting ourselves out of some hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of debt capacity a year, give or take, and increasing our tax rate by fourteen and some odd percent in the hopes that the mud would offset most or all of that in a reduction by virtue of the fact that they would obviously not have, not be operating the fire department at that point. And I'd express my reasoning as to why maybe that wouldn't happen. And I recognize that that's a risk. Garrett made a really good point about, we got to trust people to do the right thing. And, um, I do support this motion. I support the offer. I can, I can take on some additional cost when it means delivering the best possible product. I think what the chief has said to us is very good evidence that supports why it would make sense and what Tim said earlier. Reinforce that, but I just want to make, I just want to make it clear that I'd be a lot more comfortable if this was in response to the mud board coming to us and saying, here's our, here's our plan for what we would do after we don't have the fire department anymore. You know what I mean? Just to say, just to say, this is, uh, this is kind of how our outlook will look now that this is off our books. And so we don't have that because obviously we're initiating this now, but hopefully in the future, as a part of this discussion, that would then, some of that might come back to us. And we would understand, you know, how this will overall impact the finances of people that pay taxes in the town and the fact that they're obviously going to be still paying mud tax. So, um, I look forward to hearing more about that.
Garrett?
I'm trying to think of what I want to say. I guess I, I just want to make a statement before we vote. Um, first of all, I, I'm going to be in favor of this motion. Second, I'm torn and disappointed in myself that I am because I'm voting to raise taxes, which is against everything that I believe in. But, and, and I, I do have a concern and a caution to us and I, I hope that the mud board watches this and, and, and respects the fact that, uh, we're putting a lot of faith in them if they do accept this offer that they will lower the mud taxes. I know we can't make them not or the, do that, but I, I, I would hate to look back a year from now and say that I raised taxes for the residents of Trophy Club and the reduction didn't happen on the mud side. I, I know I can't control that. I think this is what's right. I, I believe in what you said, chief. I, I, and I support both of you guys. I really do. And I think this is what's best, and so I'm going to vote in favor of it. And I don't want to be skeptical, but I'm, I'm, I am a little nervous. I, I don't want to see taxes go up dramatically, but I'm going to take a leap of faith and I'm going to think that everybody is going to negotiate in good faith on this. And, and so I do support it and that's, that's the direction I'm heading in.
Thank you, Garrett. But before I go to you, Philip, I just want to clarify something to make sure because the statement has been made by Ryland and Garrett about a tax rate increase. It was my understanding from the financial figures that we could accomplish all of this without raising our tax rate next year based on estimated income of property values. And all it really is affecting is how much we have available in bonding capacity for capital projects. Is that right?
That's correct.
Does y'all understand it that way?
I have a, I have a, I have a piece of paper in front of me that says, add mud fire tax to town tax. No additional total tax to residents.
We are adding the tax.
The resident and their tax bill would not see necessarily an increase.
Unless the mud did not decrease.
The mud did not reduce theirs or they raised theirs.
That's where you were heading.
We'll go up.
Which you can't control. But our total tax rate would go up. That's correct.
Okay, we are increasing the, this, the city side of things. We are voting to increase the city's tax.
For the PED.
And we have to have the faith that the mud will.
Now, the PED reduces emergency assessment fee.
Well, it would eliminate the assessment fee.
Eliminated, right?
And now they'd have a tax deductible tax.
So now they would treat that as a tax.
They would get a runoff. You know, they're potentially going to see a benefit from.
So the issue I still don't know is how this affects potential rollback aspects.
Well, you, you're, you're allowed to accept, um, operations and increase your tax rate accordingly. Um, and I don't know, you know, I can find out the exact rules on that. I, I know you can't do it every year. You can't keep assuming operations, uh, but there, there is a limit on that and I'll have to find out exactly what that is.
So the question I.
Could make out real well, mud residents could be in.
Yeah. So the, Philip had his hand up, so just a second. Uh, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear on, on where that is. And I think what I'm looking for from staff is that at our next meeting, I don't know that you can get data from our financial advisor, but at least reach out about that so we have more data that we could have a discussion item based on our offer, recognizing that, uh, the mud will have a meeting before our next meeting, right? I think that's correct. And so they.
They, they will not.
You'll meet next week.
Oh, we'll meet and they have not, they will not meet yet.
They won't meet for two weeks.
Okay, all right. Philip, and then Greg.
Um, I, I'm also going to support the motion and I hate giving money up. And I know if you drive that way, that's a huge development that they're building and a lot of tax money. But if, if I would have had to make this decision, and no disrespect to the event y'all went to today, but if I had to make this decision a year ago, I would not be wanting that on, on a different regime. But I think that, I think that we have proven, um, that leadership changes and we have, we have, as Garrett says, we keep saying, here's the bar and you, you reach that. We raise it, you reach that. And I think that we've made a lot of changes and, and the police chief is one position that changed and things have, lights have been shown and it has been cleaned up. And I think that we're headed in that same direction with the fire department. It's not perfect over there. There are a lot of good guys, like he said, that need leadership, plain and simple. And I think it's incumbent upon us, even though I hate to give away revenue, hate it, either we, either we pick up the ball and we run with it or we lateral it off and, and hope for the best. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to pick that ball up and run with it and, uh, take the lead on this. And that's why, that's why I wanted this motion out so that we can say, here it is. It's, it's in your court now. You know, we've made the offer. We're willing to lead in this and we're telling the citizens we're willing to lead. And, uh, hopefully the mud will respond accordingly.
Craig, you had your hand up?
Two things. I think within a two or three years, we'll probably get that hundred fifty thousand back with the mud property taxes as far as the residents concerned. The other thing is I think seniors benefit on this deal. Taxes are, seniors.
Seniors.
Taxes are frozen.
That's true. You're welcome.
You're all welcome.
I appreciate it too.
Just let me know what else you need. I'll be over.
Need your flowerbed mulch or your weeds pulled. Just holler at me.
Appreciate it.
Well, that's just a hint. I mean, uh, I'm not saying that the mud directors are old, but maybe they might want to take that into consideration.
Tim?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. I, I hope that if, if we do, if we are able to, uh, buy the assets, that, that the mud drops their tax rate. And I, and I think they will. Um, on the other hand, if the mud counters and they want to take EMS from us, I hope they come forward stating that they will keep the retirement plan that, that the firemen need and to, um, to really try to change the culture there to a, a culture of service. And I know that's, you know, one, the reason why a couple of the people have, you know, become directors over there. So they become more customer service oriented, uh, so they can give both their staff and the, um, and the fire department, you know, a chance for overall success. So I, I think hopefully they would come back to the table with, with those caveats, so.
All right. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Any citizens want to make a statement?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, let me wait a minute. Did we, we voted on the amendment, didn't we? Okay, we're back to the main motion. All in favor? All in favor of the motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. All right, uh, counsel, um, in a, we still have an item to discuss in executive session. Um, uh, that is item A2. I don't think this will take long, uh, but it is something that, uh, we're facing that, that deals with, um, construction at, at school property. So that's the reason for that item is to give you some advice. So, uh, I'm gonna read this and then we will go into executive session. Item four pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meetings Act. The council will convene into executive session to discuss the following. A, consultation with attorney under subsection one, when the governmental body seeks to advise, advise of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation and subsection two for consultation with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Open Meetings Act 551.071, 1 and 2. Item one, uh, legal advice regarding fire and emergency medical services in our local agreements with the Trophy Club Municipality District Number One for fire department services, personnel services and related matters. Item two, uh, legal advice regarding town authority and enforcement of zoning laws, town ordinances and regulation. Item B, uh, section 551.074, personnel matters to discuss or deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or official, personnel services related to fire protection services. It is 9:42. We are in closed session. Take a quick break if you need to. Counsel, if you will come to order, it is six minutes before 10:00 PM. We are back from executive session. Uh, counsel, anyone wishing to take action after executive session?
None.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion, uh, by, uh, Roland Rowe and second by Jim Perro. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at six minutes till 10:00.